All right, we all set?
Yep.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 1st, 2022 meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission. This is my first time chairing the meeting, so bear with me if I stumble a bit. We'll open the this evening's meeting with the roll call. Ms. Hofstadter?
Here.
Mr. Salvane?
Here.
Mr. Renz is absent. Appears as Mr. Haas is absent. Chairman Fanaldi is absent and Vice Chairman Kyokyo is here. So with three, we do have an alternate and it'll be great if Mr. Haas joins in a bit. Commission members, you've received the draft minutes of the May 4th and May 18th meetings. Guess unless there are any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Some of.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Helen, seconded by Mr. Salvane. Is there any discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes of the May 4th and May 18th meetings are accepted. Just for the record, the next regular meeting is scheduled for June 15th. I don't know if this will be a virtual or in-person meeting. I guess that'll be decided obviously before the meeting and in time for for a notice. So we'll see where we stand on that. Before we move on to the public hearings, I'll read the intro to the Zoom meeting notice. This meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission is being held on Zoom as a virtual meeting. Even though this meeting is a virtual meeting, members of the public and interested parties continue to have the opportunity to participate in the meeting in a couple of different ways. You can participate via Zoom and see the audio and video, or you can call in by phone and participate via audio only. Please be aware that we may have to mute your microphone or telephone to avoid an echo or some other background noise. Instructions on how to participate in the meeting appear on the City of Danbury website. And all the documents and materials that apply to the matters to be discussed during this meeting, including the agenda, are also available on the City of Danbury website. As always, if you have any questions regarding how to participate in the meeting, please contact the City of Danbury Planning and Zoning Department. As a reminder, the entire meeting will be posted on and can be seen on the City of Danbury website. We will follow the posted agenda as per standard practice. If prior to the meeting, any questions or comments on the agenda items were submitted via email to the Planning and Zoning Department, those comments will be read during the appropriate portion of the meeting. And finally, please remember that technology glitches sometimes do occur, so please be patient if that happens. All right. We'll go to the public hearings and item number one under the public hearings, new public hearings is 95 Millplain Road LLC. Application for special exception, site plan approval for self storage, self-service storage, Diamond Point Development in the CA 80 Zone, 95 Millplain Road, C14003, Special Exception 787. And now I'll read the public notice for that, this application. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission of the City of Danbury will hold public hearings commencing on seven, at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022, in a web-based meeting posted on Zoom to consider the following matter. 95 Millplain Road LLC, application for special exception, site plan approval for self-service storage, Diamond Point Development in the CA 80 Zone, 95 Millplain Road, C14003, Special Exception Number 787. Copies of these applications are on file in the Planning and Zoning Office for Public Inspection. Parties and interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time. Arnold E. Fanaldi, Jr., Chairman, posted on the city website and the town clerk's office on May 17th, 2022, and published in the News Times on May 20th, 2022, and May 27th, 2022, Purchase Order Number 2022-174. So with this application, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Ben, you're on mute.
Yes, thank you, Bob. For the record, Benjamin Dotto, a licensed professional engineer, representing the applicant tonight, Diamond Point Development. Also with me tonight is, are the applicant themselves, Jason Sommer, and I think I see Aaron on here as well, Aaron Sommer. Joe Balskus is our traffic engineer. The Sommers are the contract purchasers of the property, as was listed on the application. They're not the current owner, but they are the contract, are under contract to purchase the property. Also with us are, is Ray Gennaro, he's our geotechnical engineer, and Abigail Adams, our landscape architect. This is the opening of the public hearing. This application was submitted several weeks ago. We just recently received some comments. So since it's the first meeting, I'm going to go over the presentation. And then I'm going to just touch on some of the staff comments, so there isn't a ton of back and forth. We will, I'm sure we'll get at least one question tonight from the commission. So what our plan is to, after tonight's meeting, is to sort of put our arms around all the comments and questions, make any revisions to plans, and submit a consolidated written response to the comments of staff. So again, this this site, 95 Millplain Road, it's at the intersection of Millplain Road and Ant Hack Road. It's an undeveloped site, but not an unused site. Its history, I think years ago, was a trailer park. More recently, it's sort of been a, an overflow parking lot for an adjacent property. A couple of years ago, it was used by the contractors who replaced that big natural gas pipeline running through the city. They rented it for a period of time and they staged it and used it as a construction yard. And, you know, had a driveway apron there. That's why you see its site, although it's undeveloped. It's, it's, I think it's very familiar to everyone. Currently, the site itself is a 3.3 acre site in the CA 80 Zone. The proposed use is a self-service storage facility. The Sommers have, they do these facilities up and down the East Coast. I'll let Jason during his presentation sort of go into that. The site itself is a special exception use in the CA 80 Zone. It's going to be a climate-controlled facility. It's going to be three stories, just under 100,000 square feet. Coincidentally, we are also in the Lake Kenosha watershed and Lake Kenosha Class II environmentally sensitive area. That's because the neighbor site has wetlands. We don't have any wetlands on our site, but we do have some very close to us. And there is some, technically, some slopes that exceed the threshold for putting you in environmentally sensitive area with shallow ledge, according to the zoning regulations. So therefore, we have additional regulations on top of the overlying DA 80 regulations. The most stringent of those regulations is a 50% impervious coverage requirement. As you know, the zone allows 30% building coverage and then, you know, typically you can get pretty, you know, to the heart's desire with with impervious coverage, unless you are in this environmentally sensitive area, which we are. So we do have to be below the 50% impervious. We're at 44. And as a result, our building coverage is 23%, which 30% is allowed in this zone. We are not one of the prohibited uses that are specifically excluded in the environmentally sensitive area. Those are the junkyards, you know, gas stations, things of that nature. So we don't fall into that. We are a special exception use. As I mentioned, the the site is at the intersection of Ant Hack Road and Millplain. The proposal is to put two driveways on the side. I'll flip to the plan in a second. I just want to sort of give the opening summary here. The main driveway we're putting on Ant Hack Road, Ant Hack is a short distance to a signalized intersection. And the driveway on Millplain, we're going to have a right turn in, right turn out only driveway. For those of you that are familiar with Millplain, which I know you all are, the easiest way to describe it is if you go down the street to the CBS across from Stop &amp; Shop. That has a right turn in, right turn out driveway on Millplain Road. And then it has its main driveway on a local road that feeds a traffic signal. So the layout is very similar to that, although we don't have nearly as much traffic. And, but I'll let Joe touch on the traffic because we are a self-storage facility. The site does have some grades, for those who are familiar with it. The back half of the lot is is, it's a hillside where we have quite a bit of ledge. I'll let Ray touch on some of his geotechnical findings. The front portion of the site, as I mentioned, is disturbed, but it's flat. So the building itself will be, you know, half, half-built on the flat side and half tucked into the ledge. It will be three stories. The front entrance will basically be at grade in the front. And, you know, the, they'll have a second floor entrance on the backside. The third floor, there'll be no ground access to the third floor. That'll be access from inside the building via elevators and stairs. I'm going to share my screen here. Can everyone see this?
Nope, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Kevin, Ben, while you're doing that.
I did it, I did it wrong.
While you're doing that, I noticed that Kevin is, has joined the meeting. So for the record, Kevin, Mr. Haas is in attendance. And Mr. Haas, can you sit in for Chairman Fanaldi tonight?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. You can see it now, Ben.
Okay, great. Thank you. I forgot to hit the share button. It's been a little while. So for those of you that are familiar with the property, as I just mentioned, here's, here's the site right here with, north is facing up. The the right turn in, right turn out driveway is, is right here on Millplain. And then we have a full-service driveway right here on Ant Hack Road, opposite of Joe's Hill. The, the the office entrance is right here. There's also a main entrance here on the first floor and the one in the backside on the back, on the, on the second floor. The site itself has a, has a driveway system that rings about 75% of the building. It climbs up the grade on the east side adjacent to the building that, that the retail building next door at number 93. The site will be served by city water and city sewer. The site itself, I'm going to flip over to the renderings. This is a, this is an architectural rendering of what it's going to look like. This is standing in the intersection of Ant Hack and Millplain Road, looking to the northeast at the building, where I said the, the office entrance is at the corner there. For self-storage buildings are, as far as they're considered, it's a very attractive building for a self-storage site. It has no exterior doors, no exterior garage doors. All the unit access is going to be from the inside. And it has no gate system on the outside. So there's no perimeter chain link fence with sliding gates. It's going to be an open parking lot, just like you would go into any, any business. All the security will be on the actual doors that the tenants will have access to, to be able to get in. So we, we did, and just, just for clarity, we submitted a plan that said architectural renderings without trees. Just want to be certain that we are putting trees here. That plan was done just so the trees wouldn't hide the building in case you wanted to see what the building is. Just to get a sense. As I mentioned, the site is flat in the front. And then as you see over the back of the building, there is a hillside that we are going into. The vehicle trips, according to the city's multiplier, is 511 trips. We are that's according to the city's multiplier using warehouse. We anticipate significantly less trips. I will let Jason talk about the trips that he expects from his, from his other self-storage sites. We based our parking, we have a total of 11 parking spaces on site. That is more than we need and we have some data that Jason will prepare, will present as well from their, their existing facilities. When they have known people coming and going, we actually have data as to the maximum amount of people at the place at one time. And then we have a safety factor on top of that as well. The, there is excavation on the back of the site. As I had mentioned, there is a, a good amount of ledge in the back of the site, going up the hillside. And this area here, we are going to be having some ledge remove, ledge and rock removal to, to get the grades that we need. And secondly, we're going to have a small, when I say small, retaining wall, about a 10-foot-high wall over here. I will let Ray touch in, touch, go into detail on the rock removal. But the bottom line is, we, we worked in conjunction with our geotech on this, both the applicant, myself and Ray, to develop both how we're going to do the cut slopes, what safety factors we're going to have as far as the cut slopes aren't going to come right into the parking lot or right against a building. We have a catchment zone. And we also have means for drainage to get out of there. There will be a safety fence on top of the ledge cut. And as you can see, there is a significant buffer to the to the, to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Just to give a sense, this area here, this area here, and then this is a residential property as well. And then obviously, we have them across the street. So the ledge cuts, we're not getting aggressive with the residential neighbors. We're leaving a undisturbed, significant undisturbed area anywhere from, you know, to the, to the people uphill, anywhere from 90 to 150 feet. And then to the, to the, to the neighbors to the east, a little less. We have about maybe 20 or 25 feet here, but again, that cut's not significant. And as you can see, if you go back in their parking lot, you'll see they have a ledge cut themselves that they did when their, their parking lot was developed years ago. The site will be served by city water and city sewer. We have a sewer lateral and we just have to tie in the water. It will be sprinkler. The entire building will have a sprinkler system in it. The as we had mentioned, we, we, the, the plan, as I'd said, we had some internal planning with, with, with the project team here. But we've also, we had a pre-application meeting with city staff back in the, in the winter. And this plan that's presented to you today reflects some of the comments of city staff. It's not the first plan that we prepared. It's, it's very similar, but we did make some changes in response to staff comments, mainly, mainly to do with the driveway configurations and items of that nature. We are not in the flood zone. We do have an elaborate landscaping plan and also stormwater management plan that we're mitigating our increases, but we're also meeting the water quality requirements of the Class II Lake Kenosha watershed. We actually have some excellent sandy soils in the front of the site and we're taking advantage of those for infiltration and water quality. The, we received comments, the, the few comments trickled in. And then we received a, several staff reports at the end of last week. I'm just going to touch on those comments. I'm not going to go into them in a tremendous amount of detail. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has. But I just want to touch on, the building department was fine. Again, they just reviewed for handicap accessibility, which we do have a space. The fire marshal had two, two sets of comments. One had to do with, he wanted, Terry Timman wanted striping and signage, no parking fire lanes. We will, we will, those will be included on the next revision. And his next plan had to do with items with respect to blasting and, and rock removal. I'll let Ray touch on that as well. Construction services, Rob Barone had a, he had asked that we put a crosswalk be painted crossing Ant Hack Road right here. There's an existing sidewalk to nowhere, across from Ant Hack, across us from it, on Ant Hack. And we're proposing one with a pad, so we, we will, the next revision will include, include that crosswalk as well. Then a few of Rob's other comments had to do with asphalt versus concrete curbing on Millplain. We had proposed asphalt curbing on Millplain and concrete curbing on Ant Hack, only because we know the city likes concrete curbing, but the DOT prefers asphalt. So we will resolve that and do whatever the DOT requires. We will let them know what the city's request is with respect to that. There's currently asphalt curbing out there on front of the site, in front of the site now. And we are extending sidewalks along the, pretty much the entire site from this, from this driveway right here, the new driveway on Ant Hack, all the way across the site to 93. We are, there was no need or no purpose to go up the hill without dramatically changing the, the, the character of Ant Hack Road. Not to mention the steep slopes and, and, and heavy vegetation up there. So Abdul had some comments with respect to, first of all, I'm going to go over the, the, the only comment of his that I don't agree with. Abdul asked that we try to put a driveway getting from going around the northwest side of the building, this way to this way. There, there was no need for that. We, we discussed this during the pre-app meeting based on the, on the traffic flow. There's really no need to even get access to the back of the building like we have now. We have access to about 75% of the building as we speak. Trying to achieve that would, would probably double the amount of rock removal we'd have around the northwest side of the building. I'm not even sure we can make the grades work. And most importantly, the, the Fire Marshal's Office did not request that we do that. The Fire Marshal's Office was fine with the layout of the driveway system, the way we have it, so long as we take care of the fire lane striping. So again, we feel there's no need. The Fire Marshal felt there was no need to connect that. And then Abdul also mentioned that if that driveway were to go there, he'd want it to be one-way. He'd want it to be 8%. And there's no way we can make those grades work without really messing up parking lot at the Joe's Hill Road entrance. The rest of Abdul's comments are pretty straightforward. He's asked us to prepare a truck turning plan for a WB50 vehicle. And, and we're, I will do that and have that ready in advance of the next meeting. The WB50 vehicle is, will, will come to the site very rarely, and even Abdul mentioned that in his report. These are very small self-storage units. They're probably on average about 150 square feet each. Most of them are even less than that in size. The, the typical vehicle comes here for a few minutes. It's a pickup truck or an SUV or passenger vehicle. Occasionally, you'll get a moving van coming in and on a rare occasion, a, a, you know, a WB50 trailer vehicle. But these, this isn't the type of place that moving and storage companies come to, to drop off stuff. But that doesn't stop, that doesn't mean we will never get one. And our driveway system is, is designed to be able to accommodate that. And I will have that presentation, whether it's coming in this way and, and being able to go out this way or coming in this way and going out there. The, the WB50 vehicle is not intended to go up the driveway and go in the back of the site. We had done that just for the fire apparatus to be able to get up to the, to the back of the site. We will also present the fire truck being able to come in and out and go to the back of the site as well. Engineering, Kelly questioned our water and sewer estimate. I think she thought I wasn't being conservative enough. So what we did, this is again, a very unusual building. It's just under 100,000 square feet. And there's probably one to, two max employees there using 20 gallons a day plus some maintenance water. So again, a very low usage. We're getting water bills from the applicant at another similarly sized site, and we'll, we'll give that to Kelly. The rest of Kelly's comments, she had one question on, want me to check a dimension and provide some riprap. We can do that. Her next question had to do with the existing storm drainage system. The existing storm drainage system is in, it's actually in the front of our site. The, for those of you that may not know, and it's a little interesting tidbit, Joe's Hill Road historically ran across here. So a lot of this gray area you see in our front yard is existing DOT drainage that they have an easement through our property in the old right-of-way. It's no longer a right-of-way. It's currently owned by the owner of this property. It was, it was, it was sold by the DOT. We are tying into that system after our detention system. We did locate the pipe that's on our property that served our property in the past. It appeared to be in very good condition. I looked at it myself, although I didn't cut it open and look inside. So the pipe's there. It's a 15-inch RCP pipe. And all the drainage calculations are designed to enter that pipe and go into the system. Again, we're, and we are reducing our levels. The rest of Kelly's questions, she had a few related to the grading and the rock slopes. I'll let Ray touch on that. And then last but not least, Jen's staff report. The construction limit line, she asked us to show that. I will add that to my plan. It is on Abigail's plan. Not the construction limit line, but the, basically where, where the intent of the vegetation is to remain. And as you can see on Abigail's plan, I don't want to steal her thunder here, but I'm only showing the tree line. If you could see the tree line to remain undisturbed behind the excavation, that's the intent. I will just add that to my plan as well, just to clarify it. And then basically, the construction limit lines on the, the southwest, southeast and southern property lines is basically the property line and, and the, in the right-of-way. Jen had asked questions about the, how long this will take, sediment erosion controls. We're not exactly sure. Again, it depends on the contractor that ultimately gets hired for this, but you know, guessing a two-to-four month period, depending on how aggressive and how many people they staff the project with. We, we don't think, some of Jen's comments were related to processing, crushing and screening here. The two contractors that we've spoken with feel that based on the size of the site, again, it's not that big of a site, that it'll be more efficient to remove the rock, take it to an off-site facility and anything that has to come back. Because this is a net cut site, there'll be more material removed than brought in. Will be processed most likely off-site and then brought in as either gravel or structural fill or whatever. The wells, Jen asked about our neighbors' wells. I did a Freedom of Information request from the Health Department, and once we get information on those wells, we will provide that on a plan for the five residential properties upstream and across the street from us. As far as septic systems, there should be no issue with septic systems. The Connecticut Health Code only gets concerned when you cut 50 feet or less below a septic system. As I had mentioned, our nearest cut is 90 feet to a property line and probably 200 feet to the houses uphill of us. So again, those septic systems, just based on where their woods and lawn are, are well over 100, probably closer to 150 feet away from our cuts. So there, there are no issues with the cuts relative to any septic systems uphill of us. If we were cutting, you know, right up to the uphill property line or 20, 30 feet from it, then we could potentially be within that, within or near that 50-foot threshold that the State Department of Health wants to avoid with cuts below septic systems. The I'll let Ray talk about, there was a comment made about what precautions are made about falling rock. what precautions are made about falling rock? We do have a catchment zone, uh, for those of you that when you drive along the highway and you see some of the ledge cuts, sometimes you see what looks like a ditch that's pitched backwards, uh, into the ledge cut. That those serve as two purposes. They catch water, but also if you do have a piece of rock that does fall off, it bounces back toward the, uh, ledge cut and doesn't continue to go down the hill. Uh, we do provide those. And then as far as the, uh, construction entrance, Jen asked a question as to uh, that she would like that shown, um, that can easily be done. But the construction entrance is basically going to be where this entrance is right now. You'll see out there, if you go to the, if you go to the survey. Let me get to the survey here. A construction entrance was already as I had mentioned, when the gas pipeline company came in. And it's, it, it doesn't show well there now, but you'll see there's an asphalt apron. And there's also a bunch of rip rap that the weeds have sort of overtaken. But we'll clarify that. The intent is to have the construction vehicles enter and exit Mill Plain Road. Uh, and not the local road being at Hack Road, uh, during construction. And then obviously that'll be turned into a, a permanent driveway after that. Uh, Jen also had a comment that we put some extra erosion controls around the, um, the, the ditch along the neighbor's property. Yes, that's something that can be done. That's not a big deal. Um, Jen asked about the site distance on Ant Hack Road. We have, uh, good site distances throughout this. The site distance on Ant Hack, I did, I dimensioned it as a just to the center of the intersection, but I went and checked on my CAD file today, Jen, and it's, it's it's a hundred and twenty-five feet to the center of the intersection. Um, that's what we can see. The, the, the site distance that Jen asked for was this site distance right? Right here to the left. We can see, you know, I have it dimensions to the center of the intersection. You could actually see to the building at a hundred Mill Plain Road across the street. The, the driveway itself, um, that was one of the items that we changed during the applicant, during the pre-app. Um, Abdul and Vera had asked us to try to push that closer to the base of the hill in Ant Hack and better line it up with Joe's Hill Road. So that driveway right now measures about a hundred and fifteen, fourteen feet from, uh, Mill Plain Road. The city's minimum requirement is a hundred feet, uh, for commercial driveway. So we do, we do meet that requirement. Abdul asked us to play around with the, um, the entrance and exit aisle. I have him fifteen and fifteen feet. He wants one a little bigger, one a little smaller. That's not a big deal. Um, and we, we can accommodate that. The site lighting plan, and as I mentioned earlier, Jen asked for the truck turning plans. Those are the same things that Abdul asked for. We'll get those to you. Let's see. The site lighting plan, uh, we're gonna get a site lighting plan done as well. That was another one of Jennifer's comments. And then Jen had one more comment. Um, her comment was in the back here, and I'm gonna zoom in on the back. Whoops. Back of the site, again, this isn't the main door. This is the second floor entrance. We have sort of a fifty-foot wide paved area. And I have this painted island in the middle. The intent was, we have about four parking spaces there and two spaces here. So if people are parked over, over, over here, over here, we wanted them to be able to use this sidewalk system to get into the doors here and here. And be able to park, and if for some reason they had a larger vehicle or had to load, we also have a loading zone. A loading zone right here as well. If it's a busy day. But Jen's comment was, could we put curbing on this painted island? And I understand the comment, but, and you'll see when we submit our next one. The, the reason the curbing was left off there was so the Danbury's ladder truck can come in, come up, make a three-point turn and leave. And you'll see that, um, when I, when I present that plan. That's why that was done that way. From an aesthetic standpoint, you're not going to see that island at all anyway. Uh, it's going to be hidden by the building, uh, from Mill Plain Road. And then even from up on the hillside behind, it's going to be tucked in between the, uh, the excavation and the building itself. So, uh, we feel the painted island is, 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 uh, more appropriate. There's plenty of parking there, so we don't anticipate anyone parking there. Um, we can even, I mean, I, I'm thinking of this now. I could talk to Terry about it. Maybe even include that as a no parking fire lane as well. Um, that way no one, you know, no one can accidentally think it's a loading zone and ma- maybe that's what Jen was thinking with her comment. We didn't talk about it, that it'd be mistaken for a loading zone. And maybe it'd be better to paint it a no parking fire, you know, uh, fire zone. Um, and, and be done with it with respect to that. Um, I know I've spoken a long time. This is a, you know, the first time we've seen this project. I'm gonna turn everything over to Jason Sommer. And I'm going to go to, I'm just gonna leave it right here on the site plan. And I'll let Jason take over and turn my mic off.
Thank, thank you, Ben. Actually, Ben, will you put the parking analysis up? Do you have that there?
No, I didn't. Do you have it?
No, would you do it if you don't mind? I'll just do an intro if you could put that up. Hi, everyone. I'm, I'm Jason Summer. I'm gonna be very, very brief, uh, in my comments here. Ben has done a very thorough job, and as you can tell, um, we, we work with, uh, experts who understand the community and, uh, and the city. But my name is Jason Summer. I live at forty-three ten Granby Way uh, in Marietta, Georgia. I'm originally from upstate New York. Uh, my brother and I are the principals in Diamond Point Development. And we de- we develop self-storage facilities up and down the east coast. Our furthest north is in Portland, Maine, and our further south is in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, what, what we do and, uh, very proud of is we only develop Class A self-storage facilities. Uh, what do we mean by that? We, we, we don't, we don't develop the ugly, ugly, uh, roll-up doors that are sticking out towards, uh, towards the street. Uh, we only develop, uh, sites that are clean, that are professionally managed. This isn't a mom and pop shop. This will be professionally managed, will be safe, it'll be quiet. Um, and it'll be, uh, ex- uh, aesthetically pleasing. I hope everyone, when you saw the, the rendering understands that that's, that's something that we pride ourselves on, making it an asset to the community, um, from an aesthetic standpoint. And then the, the final, the, the final area that we, we pride ourselves on is for low intensity. Uh, this use is about the lowest intensity use you can have on this, on this corner. Um, again, we don't use much water. We don't use much electricity, uh, and we don't generate much traffic. And, uh, and on the screen, can everyone see the, uh, the parking study?
Yes.
The parking study is our, some of our existing facilities. And all of these are similar in size. Some are a little bigger, some are a little smaller, but similar in size to what we're proposing on the Mill Plain site, on the Mill Plain site. And all of them have either less or the same amount of parking spaces. And really, when you, when you think about self-storage, it's a matter of people are either renting a unit, they're unloading their, their goods, or they're picking up their goods. And no, no one hangs around a self-storage facility. So again, the, the parking, uh, when, when people think of a ninety-nine thousand square foot building, they see eleven parking spaces, you know, there, there's a, there's a cause for, I mean, there's a, there's a thought that, oh, this might be a problem. Well, there's not. And we've done some studies on what is our parking usage. Ben, would you please pop to the next page? This is our property in Marietta. This property actually does have a gate around it. And through this gate, it is entered by, you have to, uh, swab your, either put in a code or put your, uh, key fob in there to get in. So we can actually tell how, by day, how many visits and how many people are coming to the site. And, uh, and I know, I know when we talk about traffic, we're gonna talk about this a little more. But as you can see, the numbers are thirteen, eleven, twenty. They're, they're very, very low numbers for daily visits to the site. Again, uh, and then it's fifth average of almost sixty in a day. And then Ben, will you jump to the next one, please? Ben, can you move us down to the next, uh, page? And the next page is another one of our facilities. And again, actually, it's, it's about the same usage. And what we've found is that at, at any time during the, um, during the operations, not one day, not one hour, did we have more than five people on site. So it makes a compelling, um, story to tell you, tell you, we don't need more than eleven parking spaces. That's, that's the right number for this property. If there, if we needed more, we would put more on there, but for our customers and for the community, eleven is, is more than, than ample, uh, for our need. Um, a- a- and, and this speaks to the other reason why we think we're such a good project for Mill Plain. The area gets congested there. Everyone knows that corner in particular is a congested area. Uh, we will not add to that. We are about as low traffic use as there is to put in that area. So anyway, we're, we're very proud, uh, of the product we build. We solicit solicitation. We solicit, uh, feedback from the community. We've started talking to the community as far back as January. Uh, we've met with the staff several times. Uh, we appreciate feedback that we're going to be getting from the planning board. Um, and from the community and, uh, at, at this meeting. So again, thank you. Thank you all for letting me speak. And, uh, I'm going to be available for any questions, of course, if anyone, uh, wants to, uh, talk. The only other thing I was going to, uh, say is that our website is diamondpointdevelopment.com. And if you wanted to pull up some of the other, uh, sites that we've done or projects, they're all listed as a thumbnail on there. So you'll get an idea of the quality, uh, that we build. Thank you. Ben, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jason. Um, Ben, I don't know if you have anything else to say, or you have
No, I don't. I think
Other, other folks on your team that, uh, have anything that they wanna say, we can hold. We can have, we can hold questions till, uh, your, the, you, uh, finish the presentation.
Great. We're gonna have Joe, Joe, Joe Ray and then Abigail.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks, Ben. Joe Volskas for the record, licensed special engineer, special transportation operation engineer. Um, prepare the, uh, travel and random you have dated March fifteenth. And just to follow on what Jason was saying about, about generation, this is the ideal, uh, development for, for low impact development in terms of generation. This, this and assistive living. These are the ones that really have low generative traffic. Um, so we did, we did do a traffic study to, to follow through on the application requirements, and it's pretty detailed as you can see there. And the, and we'll, we'll talk about numbers in a minute, but just real quick, the just, it just conditions, we all know Mill Plain Road, uh, we know the intersection on Hack Road. So if you know, Mill Plain carries like sixteen thousand cars a day, or maybe seventeen thousand vehicles a day. On Hack Road's like thirty-six hundred cars a day. Uh, we looked at the crash history, not much of a crash history at the intersection as well. You see there, we had five total crashes at the intersection over the last three-year period. Nothing really speak of there. We looked at the generation, you know, Jason talked about what, what he has from other sites, and that, that's the best numbers to use. Uh, we, we use ITE, as you know, ITE generation, man, we use that. Uh, the city has their own table as well. Uh, but, uh, for things like this, where we have data available from, from our, our clients who like to use that data, but for purposes of the analysis, we did the, uh, two generation analysis using ITE and then and page six of the memo, you can see there we have, uh, we, we've laid out the chip generation for this based on ITE, and then also for the cities. The cities get their own generation multiplier. And, you know, basically we're, we're saying it's, you know, the city's saying it's eighty-five vehicles uh, and a peak hour. We're saying it's like fifteen vehicles in the peak hour. Jason's saying it's even less. So, uh, and, and that's real data. Uh, yeah, ITE's got real data from real studies as well. Jason's got specific data for his use and, and what, and his product he's developing there. So, so it's very low generator traffic, as you can tell, um, and, you know, maybe thirty vehicles a day. So we look at thousands of cars per day on Mill Plain Road, this is not an issue. This is a material impact, uh, in terms of traffic. We did do analysis of the intersection of Aunt Heck Road and Mill Plain Road. And obviously you, you can see the table there. We did a level serve table that outlines the, the results, and there's no change. There's no change of service. There's no issue with queuing on, on Hack Road approach as well. Uh, so this, this is, this really, uh, and, and, you know, very easy for, for us to conclude based on the data we have, based on the accounts we've done. Mason, knowing the intersection itself, uh, I, I've done work on Down Mill Plain Road, did the Cart Care Loses, did the Prindle Lane, you know, so I'm very familiar with this area and what's going on. And, and there is congestion here, but this, this development is not gonna, is not gonna affect that. It, it's gonna, it's gonna be unnoticedable in terms of the traffic being generated and, and, and the impact from that. So I, I'm on with that, with that, with that statement, it's not gonna have an impact. Traffic operations, very low generator, is the ideal development. It's like assistive living. They don't have too much generation traffic where they provide development. Uh, so that's that. On, on point of Ben pointing out some of the comments, I, 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 then I talk about some of the comments, then in terms of the circulation, agree with those comments and circulation and, uh, and, and the drives that he made comments on. Uh, look at the comments from, uh, from Abdul and Vera regarding traffic. Um, there is a couple of things here that, you know, we, you know, nothing, nothing major here. The generation, uh, they mentioned is a hundred forty-five per day. Uh, we, we think that's very high, but regardless, if it is a hundred forty-five per day, there's still no impact to the, to the intersection operations. There really is a hundred forty-five per day when you have sixteen thousand a day is immaterial. Uh, it's immaterial in terms of, in terms of the impacts. Uh, there was a question regarding crashes per year. They, they verified the same crash date that we found as well. Um, from the Yukon Crash Repository, Ben's looking, doing the trucks, uh, the truck access. And the driveways on Mill Plain Road, this is DOT, uh, Mill Plain Road DOT jurisdiction. So the driveway itself, uh, on Mill Plain Road will be functioning what DOT is looking for from District Four. But I'll work with Ben on that in terms of any changes that the driveway need to be done as part of the approach and permit. So, so bottom line is real quick, it is, it is a, a very, very, uh, straightforward traffic study. There's no impact. There's good sightlines. Very low traffic being generated. Um, so therefore, that's what the conclusion of the traffic study, there's no, there's no impact to the traffic operations. And I'll take any question. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. I, um, we'll, we'll hold questions to the end and just kind of go through the whole, whole, uh, presentation and then we'll, we'll come back to whoever we need to for questions.
So Ben, who?
Right, okay.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Ray Gennaro. I'm principal, uh, at Downruth Consulting. We're located at one-twenty-two Church Street in Auguste, Connecticut. And as, uh, Ben eloquently stated, uh, they realized early on this project that, that rock excavation is gonna be a critical aspect for this project. Ben, thank you for bringing that up. If you could leave that up, that'd be great. Um, we have some rock excavation that would be needed to accommodate the proposed building. And we were essentially brought in for two reasons. One, to ensure that the proposed rock slope would be safe and stable over the long term. And, uh, second, to ensure that during construction of this rock slope, uh, we implement measures to mitigate risks associated with impacts uh, to not only pa- uh, the, the parcel itself, personnel on this property, but also the adjacent parcels and the neighboring parcels and their structures. Um, so in tonight, I'm probably gonna focus on the latter. And in order to achieve that, we put together, uh, this rock excavation recommendation and control measures, uh, report. And that's where we kind of summarize, um, what, uh, what we are shooting to achieve out here. Uh, so we want basically everyone to, to realize that what we put together, the specification that we are going to ensure that our earthworks contractor and their respective blasting subcontractors, if blasting uh, is required for this project. I would anticipate it as such, um, but there are various means to excavate rock. That they are held to that spec. And, you know, we've, we've done a bunch of these types of projects. And I will say that the specification that we provided, that we prepared for this project, eight, eight pages in length, uh, goes above and beyond typically what the local fire marshals require in order to issue their permit. Uh, so I can go through a brief, I, I know we, we spent some time, I'll address some of the questions as well. But basically, just to quickly go through, um, you know, in terms of rock excavation, this is a very interesting site, and Ben mentioned it. The reason we have such a drop-off with the rock is we actually have a contact zone. Um, where there are two formations of bedrock. Uh, on, on the upper or the, the northern portion of the site, we have, uh, a very competent, uh, nice, it's a metamorphic rock. And it transitions, uh, down towards the Stockbridge, the marble formation, a lot of marble in Danbury. And we've, we did boring's up at, at the top. It's pretty obvious, ubiquitous bedrock outcrops. Um, at the top, uh, and at the bottom, we advanced some boring's too, and, and kind of a lot of those sands that, that uh, Ben had discussed. And bedrock, uh, at the, the southern limits of the building is down about forty feet. So it is a very drastic drop-off here. Um, as I mentioned, the rock is, is, is pretty competent, which is good. As I mentioned, the rock is, is pretty competent, which is good for what we're trying to achieve. And the, the slopes at which we're trying to achieve. And again, before anything gets done on this parcel, one of the requirements is, is obviously retaining a competent earthworks contractor. Someone who's dealt with rock removal and rock excavation at an extent such as this. As Ben mentioned, we did talk to, to a couple of reputable local contractors, both of which have a good handle as to what needed to be done here. As Ben mentioned, this site, we don't anticipate any onsite processing due to the size of the site and the fact that, that, you know, the, the contractors are looking at this, they have their materials yards relatively close nearby. So they would direct load any excavated rock material, process it offsite and return any structural fill crush stone that is needed to, to support the project. So when the earthworks sub has been retained and they're looking to retain a blasting subcontractor, that blasting subcontractor will need to develop a blasting plan. Essentially, it's, it's, it's a, a set of documents, set of procedures, means and methods at which the, the blasting subcontractor will safely and effectively remove rock from the site. That plan gets reviewed by us and also gets submitted to the local fire marshal for their approval and issuance of a permit as well. Before any earthworks or blasting related activities occur on this site, typically a pre-blast conditions assessment is offered to the neighboring parcels. In our specification, we clearly outline, you know, what goes into that and the radius of influence. That was the one comment that the only comment we received from the fire marshal was increasing the radius in which we offer the conditions assessment to the neighboring parcels and we'll be sure to, to incorporate that into our construction documents. And basically, it's a very innovative survey where professional engineers offer services to document structures, retaining walls. Ben mentioned the, the supply wells as well. Once we get that information back from the, the local health district, we'll be sure to incorporate that in this, in the survey as well. And basically document any, any conditions prior to, to any earthwork, rock excavation activities on this site. After that's been done and after, as I mentioned, the permit is in hand from the local fire marshal, a test blast would be performed. That would take place in the remote area of the site. And the purpose of that is, is, is twofold. One, to verify that the blasting subcontractor is adhering to his blast plan, is, is competent. Is able to, to fragment rock as effectively and efficiently as, as they pose in their plan. And two, we also want to assess what potential impacts, what, you know, overburn pressures. Also vibration levels that we would anticipate and test blasts is just that. So detonate a small charge, set up some seismographs, collect data. And with that data, we could then assess during production whether or not we may have an issue with neighboring parcels. And if, based on the test data and the proximity of, of production blasting activities in the future, we could assess, okay, you know, blasting subcontractor, you may need to tweak some of your blasting agents. You may, you may need to, to increase your delays in order to again mitigate the risks, any potential risks to neighboring parcels. After that data has been collected, reviewed, we would also disseminate that data, the fire marshal, any, any interested regulatory agencies as well. And then after we feel comfortable with everything and during production blasting, a monitoring program is, is implemented where we essentially place seismographs at, at the property lines, basically intercepting any construction induced vibrations from earthwork blasting activities to the neighboring parcels to ensure that the vibration and frequency levels are below acceptable threshold values. And you know, I could, I could get into some more, you know, the specification, again, it's eight pages. It's, it's a very robust spec that again, the, the blasting subcontractor will need to adhere to. And, and again, this is, this will this, this rock removal excavation blasting program will be administered as such. So I addressed the, the one comment the fire marshal have had. Again, we're going to incorporate that into the construction documents. I'm also looking at the, some of the comments Ms. Eminger had. Ben touched on, on, on a bunch of them. I'll hit on those. And again, as, as Ben mentioned, we're going to formally respond to these comments. So there's a, a question regarding dust and airborne particulates. Again, with, with the blasting operation, mats are used to control. Because again, the, the entire objective of blasting is not to send rock everywhere. The, the whole purpose of, of blasting, and again, this is, you know, technology's been around for, for centuries, really. It's just to fragment the rock in place. And once that's happened, then we could easily excavate that rock. And in this case, direct load onto trucks and, and bring it offsite. So those blasting mats really help control. And again, you need to include that overburn pressure. So, so extra fragmentation, extra fluffing doesn't occur. And then it also helps control the dust. And then if, if for whatever reason, prior to detonating charges, we need to, to water down the, these mats in the surface, we can certainly do that. But I've, in all honesty, never really had an issue in terms of, of, of dust associated with, with blasting activities. There was also a question regarding impacts of Lake Kenosha. If I'm not mistaken, Lake Kenosha is about a mile away, miles south and east. And we're well above that small site. We would not be excavating within the water table as, as well. So to answer that question, I don't anticipate any impacts to Lake Kenosha. I understand we are in the Lake Kenosha watersheds. That's why that, that question was presented. And again, no, we don't anticipate any rock crushing or processing onsite. That'll take place offsite. And then, yeah, I'll touch on it again. So additional measures to protect against falling rock. And Ms. Green also had a similar comment. So, so rock weathers, all rock weathers. That's how we get soil. If it wasn't for the weathering of rock, we wouldn't have soil. So over time, rock will weather and material will fall from this rock slope. So it's, it's critical to incorporate some type of, in this case, a rock catchment area. It's a dedicated rock catchment area that is pitched back against the slope where rock can fall safely within this, this rock catchment area. And this area can get maintained and remove any, any fallen material, fallen debris. During March, a lot of times you get ice buildup, ice fall. And so that area can, can easily get maintained. And again, as Ben mentioned, it is, the, the rock catchment area for this project has been designed in accordance with federal highway guidance. And as Ben mentioned, it's, it's with the DOT uses and references when they design their rock slopes on the edges of, of highways. Just make sure real quick. And again, so in terms of the measures that will be taken to protect public health, welfare and safety, that is of utmost importance to us. That is why we've spent the time to develop this specification that will be included into the contract documents to ensure that the blasting subcontractor goes above and beyond what is typically required in order to was typically required prior to issuance of a blasting permit from the local fire marshal. And, and again, and any questions be here to, to, to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
Abigail.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Abigail Adams, registered landscape architect, owner of A2 Land Consulting out of New Fairfield, Connecticut. Just, mine's going to be the briefest part of the presentation, which is, which is fine. We have proposed typical end island trees as required by the zoning regulations. Buffer plantings with a mix of ornamental evergreen trees and ornamental shrubs along the commercial property line to the east there between the two parking areas, the access drive up and the parking area. In the front yard and the foundation plantings, they are designed for, for multiple, multiple things, for four season interest. Various flowering shrubs, ornamental grasses, evergreens. Again, we have some large canopy trees in the front along the street. Then also have some street trees running along Aunt Hack Road. As necessary, we are proposing a steep slope mix where it's required. That's the one area of grading between that retaining wall and the, the right of way along Aunt Hack Road there. We're also proposing to trim any of the low lying vegetation and branches to maintain sight lines along Aunt Hack Road. And as Ben had pointed out earlier, all of the area to the north of the development and that rock slope, that rock cut there, that's, that vegetation is all going to be maintained. It's a mix of deciduous trees under stories and it's quite wide where I think Ben was mentioning, we've got about 85, 90 feet at some of the narrowest points and all of that vegetation is going to remain up in that area. It's, it's pretty simple and straightforward, but we really think that it's going to add nicely to the aesthetic of the building and of the property and to make this a really nice corner piece right here at this intersection.
Great. Thank, thank you, Abigail. Appreciate it. Ben, I think that is that it for, as far as your presentation? I can go to commission members, any, any questions you have for, for any of the presenters?
Just very quickly, I think Ben covered this, but that painted island isn't really intended to be a loading zone. And it's, it's meant just for traffic circulation. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. It's, it's the easiest way to say, we, we wanted, we want the a fire truck or someone's up there and happens to be up there with a, you know, and, and the fire truck has to turn around. We need them to be able to make that maneuver. But again, I, I don't want it to be misunderstood as a loading zone. So I think we have to re-stripe it differently now to, I'll, I'll talk to the fire marshal about that. But my guess is we'll, we'll, we'll make that part of his no parking fire lane striping as well in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Helen, Helen, go ahead. You're on mute.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So there's a retaining wall being planned for the west side below where all this rock blasting such as, you know, the retaining walls up above it are going to be made. Is that, is that the same process to get to that retaining wall as all the rest of it? Or is that something different? And does it look the same? And you know, just maybe little detail on that retaining well.
Okay. Let me Sorry about that. I'm just trying to zoom in here, Helen. Bear with me one sec.
Yeah, thank you.
And Ben, I have a similar question. So I'll ask it while you're doing that. You, you can answer kind of both at the same times because it's, it's similar. So is there, is there going to be any fencing on, on that retaining wall and, and all behind? Kind of, you know, where that, kind of that wide dark gray area is like where the, where the, I, I guess the rock ends and that, that catch part is, will there be any kind of fencing around that area to, to separate that from kind of the building and, and the driveway area?
Yes, there, there, there will be. There's going to be a safety fence the whole upper portion of the ledge cut. So if someone happened to be wandering there or even an animal walking, they don't, they don't fall off the edge. A similar wall above is on the high side of the retaining wall. And this retaining wall, it's not that big. The retaining wall is a maximum of about 10 feet high. And to answer Helen's question, that wall is sort of just at the edge of where the ledge and the soil is met, Helen. So it, it won't be as extensive. That wall will be more of a traditional retaining wall, the way it's built, where you can do it with a machine and then just build it up to the wall. But what we didn't want to have is, we didn't want to have a, a soil slope running its way all the way down into the
Cars.
Into the parking lot and the cars. And then there was also, there was one other reason for it. And Abigail kind of touched on it. The, I'm going to my next screen here. Funny, I can't find my eraser. Sorry about that. So there's an area right here, probably because I'm drawing too much. Maybe they banned me. Oh, there it is. Right here, if you could see, this is Aunt Hack Road here, the edge of the road coming down. Our property line is way in here. So we had to do a couple of things. I, I couldn't put the retaining wall over the property line and out into Aunt Hack Road. So what I, and at the same token, I didn't want to, I needed to do some fine grading here to make sure we could achieve our site distance up, up the hill. So again, the wall goes from like zero feet here to at point C, it's probably about 10 feet along the backside here. And then ironically, from the top of the wall, it pitches back down about four to six feet to the ditch that Ray had said, Ray had just described, the catchment area. So basically, when you, when you look at the top of the wall, you actually won't see anything because the ground slopes back into the hillside to, 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 to serve as that catchment area as well. I hope I answered that question.
I was just also curious about what that wall is made of. Is that a stone, finished stone or what, what is?
I'm gonna let Jason touch. I call for it on my plan to either be reinforced concrete or a modular block. I don't know, we, we quite honestly haven't gotten to that level of detail, but I think it's something, it's obviously going to complement and blend in with the building.
Yeah, we, we usually do modular, modular walls, but again, it'll, it'll depend on what the best look is for the area.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question about, just going back over where if you go back to the, to the other drawing, the site, the site plan is, you mentioned fire lane, printing of fire lane. So can you point that out? Because I want to see like in the back right corner here, you've got like a stone looking thing. So that's not a walkway, right? That, that's the on the edge of the building.
Oh, that's a sidewalk. Yes. We have a sidewalk from here all the way to these two doors and, and along the parking. And the intent is if anyone's parking here or loading here, they can walk across, across the driveway and they have access to a sidewalk here. Likewise, on the lower end, I know it's not that same thing. We have a sidewalk here with access to the building. And again, we have a loading zone here and a loading zone here that meet the loading zone requirements. The area that we and a loading zone here that meet the loading zone requirements. The area that we I was just talking about that, you know, it was Jennifer asked, could you put a curb there? It's it's this area right here, Helen. This was just to be painted.
Right.
Because I wanted the fire truck to be able to turn there. So as I said, I think we're going to be changing that to calling that a fire lane. The fire marshal also asked, just so you know, and you you'll see it in his letter, I'm not going to belabor it. He's asked for no parking fire lane stripings, basically all around the building, which is, you know, typical what you guys see on other commercial type of developments, even residential ones with buildings.
Thank you. That helps a lot. I was because the parking on some of the other diagrams in the back there wasn't on there. And I thought the fire truck could be jamming into the sidewalk if that's what it was. So clarification. Thank you.
And just to get a sense of the of the dimension here. This is from this curb to the sidewalk is fifty feet. So that's that's if you can imagine any town road in town, that's twenty four, twenty five feet. It's it's twice that distance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the commission members? I I just had a couple of quick questions. Ben, the give me the number of units there. I I thought I saw maybe six hundred or six fifty somewhere and kind of the the sizes of of the units kind of on average.
I'm I'm going to let Jason talk about that.
Sure. It's going to be about six hundred and seventy total units. The units range from five by fives, twenty five square feet to ten by thirties, which would be three hundred square feet. And the average unit size is roughly a hundred. A ten by ten is our most popular size. So a hundred square feet is the most common. And it's also about the average, which I think we're, I think it's going to be like a hundred and two thousand square feet is our is technically our average square foot.
Got it. Okay. And then I see the loading zones, you know, kind of on on opposite sides of the building there. They don't seem to to kind of be near the entrances, seems a little inefficient to me. But can you is that is that really cause any any issues as far as loading? I I guess with given the some of the smaller ones, five by five, you're not really, you don't really have too big of items to to put in there. But can you kind of give me a sense of is is that is that normally the case where the loading zones are kind of on opposite ends of the building?
Yeah, the the reason I think the reason Ben laid it out this way, and it is, it is common for other properties that we have as well, is that this is just for when the big trucks come and they don't come that much. It's mostly personal vehicles, SUVs, pickup trucks. But when they come and if they feel more comfortable pulling off, we don't want to, you know, any sort of parking jam or anything. So it gives them a spot to to load where they're free from any sort of parking or 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 traffic on the site. Does that make sense? Ben, did I explain that right?
Yes. Basically, Bob, one of the one of the nuances of the zoning regulations is loading zones are required based on square foot of building. And as we discussed, this building is basically a dead zone compared to a traditional warehouse or or or, you know, a distribution area supermarket. But we still have to, according to the regs, provide a minimum square feet of loading zone. We probably would have been fine with half of what we have now, but we had to meet the regs. And as Jason said, we want the people to be able to park in their cars and get over to the sidewalk as quickly as they can and walk through the door, whether they're carrying a box or have a dolly or something like that. But if someone does show up in a U-Haul, you know, a rented U-Haul box truck or a they're towing a utility trailer, they would have the ability to park in those loading zones and be off to the side.
Yeah, okay.
And there are no, as I mentioned, in traditional self storage, not climate controlled, but there's some that are sort of hybrids between the the two that have both. We don't have any exterior garage doors that people are going to be able to pull a car up to or 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 a truck up to and load those garage doors on this. Everything you're going to have to do is you're going to have to either carry it in or 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 wheel it in or dolly it in to the site, to the inside.
Okay, got it. Okay. And the last question for for Joe. The traffic memo, you know, it's dated March of of last year. So a little dated for my perspective, but I I and I get that the site is is really not really a traffic generator. So I understand that point. Any changes, you know, two thousand twenty one is probably less traffic than there is now on Mill Plain Road, although there's always traffic on Mill Plain Road. And then, as you know, Carolus's will be opening soon. So does that have any effect on on traffic there? And with the queue with, I think there's going to be a traffic light at Carolus's, which is not far from from this site. So any any changes to kind of your memo and and queuing and and traffic there, just a few comments there?
Yeah, yeah, Bob, the biggest change is that date's wrong. I I totally, it's supposed to be twenty twenty two. I I and I'm going through the whole document and you 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 covered, you covered it. That was that was Joel's question. You Joel's question catches up like that. But no, no, it it a good point. That that's obviously a typo. That's a glaring typo. But in term in terms of the volumes, we 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 had the data from the Carolus's and other developments, we basically projected them to, you know, to to this year. So so, you know, the model volume that we're generating, you know, the, you know, the the small numbers of traffic we're generating, there's really no no impact to the intersection. So we we do incorporate the Carolus's development that that's going up down the road, you know, I worked on that as well. But there's there, you look at the table and look at the number of volumes that we're generating. And we projected traffic volume one percent per year, which is conservative. So any responses that know that we don't see any any, we don't see any need to make any adjustments with Carolus's open this year with the traffic. And obviously, the pandemic is here, volumes have changed, they're coming back with different patterns. But again, if we're talking a pharmacy or higher generative use, might be a little more detailed in my response. But we we don't see any any need to to make any changes to it, other than the data memo is off by year. I apologize for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. So I guess that's it as far as the presentation. I'll ask again, is, yes, Jen.
Sorry, Bob. I have two questions for Ben.
Sure.
Um, if I may, the catchment area at the bottom of the ledge. Is the catchment area preferred over that wire mesh? Like at Danbury Hospital, they have the mesh over that rock cut, the exposed rock cut is which ones preferred? I know you're using a DOT standard. But is that a is that a better method as as opposed to the wire mesh?
Yep.
Yeah, I could answer that.
I'll let I'll let Ray talk about that.
Yeah. So the there are certain tools, right, that that can be implemented in terms of stabilizing rock slope. I can't speak to Danbury Hospital. I have worked on on hospitals where they have oxygen tanks at the base of these slopes and they need to be extra cautious about falling material and impacting these tanks, for example. The catchment ditch is preferred over any other types of stabilization measures. And that's for that reason why you do not see the the stabilization netting or or the rock, the energy dissipation fences, sometimes you see at the the base of the slope. And the reason for that is maintenance primarily because it creates a really significant maintenance issue down the road. Imagine, if you will, you have the netting that's draped over the slope and material like I had mentioned, rock weathers into soil, rock debris will actually get caught up between the net and 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 the the face of the rock slope. And then you have to clean that out because it's a safety concern, right? So it 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 is a maintenance nightmare, if you will. Obviously, every application has has its use, right? So like, for example, in this case here, you know, we have a building, we don't really have access. We have vehicular access, but not only pedestrian access. When we did our analyses, for example, like one of the inputs is 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 proposed use, right? If this was a daycare with a playground, for example, at the the base of the rock slope, that would kind of dictate the rock catchment area, the sizes, the slopes and all that. So for this use, for the application, for the maintenance concerns down the road and for the same reasons why the DOT prefers this passive methodology in order to to retain rock, it's why we chose it for this project.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer. It was very thorough. No words. The other question, Ben, can you, when you make your next round of revisions, can you show where the the doors are into the facility? Especially in the back. I know there's one off to the side, but I don't I don't see it on your plans.
Well, I I will clarify it, Jen, but I I'm pretty sure I, what I'll do is I'll call them out better than I do.
Yeah.
Right here, right here. Here's the office entrance. And then I think these are maintenance and emergency doors, correct, Jason? We'll we'll call them out better.
Yes, that's the the riser room, the maintenance doors, that sort of thing. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just thought you'd mentioned there was a door on the side opposite the larger loading area.
No, no, what there is on this side, this was based on our pre-app. We extended the sidewalk down here a little bit. So if if you are here, you could cross and walk up this way.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
No need to make any changes. That was my one concern. That's it. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Do you mind if I add one thing, Chairman?
Go ahead, Ben.
Only because it was it was it was brought up. I know we talked about the Lake Kenosha watershed and and some of the items there and Ray Ray touched on the depth, the groundwater and things of that nature. But as long as the proper sediment erosion controls are put in during construction, there should be no fine material leaving the site, getting into the drainage way and ultimately making it to the watershed. We're also not diverting any water. That's one of the criterias of the lake. We're keeping water running it the way it is. And if that if anything, we're we're adding to the groundwater, not taking away from it. Most site developments, we can maintain our peak, we can reduce our peak flows. But the volume and infiltration is usually hard when you have port of moderate soils. And we 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 just happen to have some very nice sandy soils at the front of the site that we're taking advantage of. So from from the standpoint of meeting the criteria of the watershed, we've done that as well, because I know that's, I just want to put that on the record.
Okay, thanks, Ben. Appreciate it. All right. Is there is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Chenisi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Benjamin Chenazy. I live at five Briar Ridge Road. I am currently serving on the city council, representing the sixth ward, which is, for the record, is on the opposite side of the streets on the Carlousie side. Mill Plain Road is the border. One side is the sixth ward, the other side is the seventh ward. When I first started reviewing this application, my first thing was I was going to be very concerned with, given the size of the building, giving the size of the property, given the size of the slope of the property and listening to the presentation, a lot of those concerns were were eased. So I I am speaking in in favor of the project. But I do have, again, some concerns, having served as chairman on the Environment Wetlands Commission, I was on the zoning commission, so I do have some background in land use regulations. So some of my concerns, and I think they might have been answered, but I'm just going to put them for the record as well. So at least they're out there. As we all know, that Mill Plain Road is designated to be widened to four lanes from the New York border already down basically to the Lake Avenue side pass way. And my question would be, is how would this project, are there any contingencies if the state was to come down and say that the curb cut that you currently have has to be moved to accommodate any widening of the road? So that was a question that I have. I was thinking about when I was listening to the presentation. And I know it's in the regs that you have to at least address those concerns as well. My other question is, given the site, is there's not a lot of room around it? So you haven't mentioned maintenance or snow removal, if that snow is going to be remained on the property? Or is it's going to be actually be moved, removed from the property? So you can apply on that. I'd be greatly appreciated as well. And I think you already mentioned the retaining wall. For those who know me is I'm not a big fan of retaining walls. And I had this image that this is going to be a eighty foot retaining wall, but it's comfortably now that it's only going to be ten feet. So so that's definitely reassuring that it's not a big retaining wall. But I had mixed feelings when you talked about the rock slope. On it. And I know I'm trying to vision what this rock slope would look like. And Ben, if you could show the picture of the building, I think it's picture one, we actually showed the pitching, the rendering of the building. Can you show that building? There it is. Okay. So when I look at this building and correct me if I'm, I don't see the retaining wall. I don't see a rock slope. So my my first looking at it as well, I'm not seeing anything. So it looks like it's a perfect fit for that for that corner. So is my vision correctly? I'm not, we're not going to see this rock slope at all? Or and we're not going to see the retaining walls from the from the roadside? So that's really my major concern is this rock slope. And I think there's some questions on it, whether we truly understand what a rock slope would look like, given this corner, because it, you know, of of the street. So those are, again, my 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 concerns that I have. Then I don't think there are enough to say I'm against the project. I think it's a good project. I think Ben did a great job in presenting it. I think the building fits well. And so those are just some of my concerns that I have, at least for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Chenisi. We'll we'll have the applicant maybe provide a few comments after after we have everyone else speaking. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Paul Rotello, thirteen Lynn Place Danbury. Like Ben, also a city councilman for the sixth ward, which is across the street from the project. So a couple of questions. The first one is is somewhat similar to Councilman Chenazy's concern. And I'll, you know, direct my my questions through you, Chairman, to the principals or to Engineer Dodo. The setback from the building looks like it's far enough from Mill Plain that it would not affect the sightlines of the Ant Hack Mill Plain intersection, which I understand obviously is signalized, but we do know that occasionally signals fail. And I would hate to see that during a blackout, people are lined up and they cannot see left to take a left on on Mill Plain. So that's an issue, particularly if, I mean, the state has been threatening, and I I use that somewhat humorously to widen Mill Plain. So obviously, if that gets, if if they wind up putting another lane there, I'm assuming it's going to reduce your setback by a commensurate amount. So I I'm just trying to figure out if even even with a widening, the setback will be enough that cars queued on Ant Hack to enter left, particularly onto a Mill Plain will be able to see in order to do that, regardless of whether the signals are working or not. The second one is a little bit dicey or a major concern for the community would be contents of the storage facility. You know, I would I would like to be assured that there wouldn't be any toxic material, explosive material, acetylene gases, high pressure things, petroleum products, things that could be either flammable ammonia that could gas off if there was a fire or something like that, that would impede responses from emergency workers and be deleterious to the neighborhood. This is not a very handsome structure, which which I appreciate for that corner. This is not a backwater. This is not a storage facility deep in the woods. This is a major, one of the most major, if not the major intersections in Danbury. uh, one of the most major, if not the major, uh, intersections in Danbury arteries. It feeds uh, people from New York State, uh, to Danbury and vice versa from six eighty-four, Route six eighty-four. Um, uh, and, and, and other, uh, there, there's a rail trail there that, that may, at, at some point, hopefully soon, sooner than later, uh, uh, feed commuter railers from, uh, from downtown Danbury to, uh, to Grand Central and anything that could affect operations in that corridor, anything explosive ordinance, things like that, uh, would be problematical. So the question would be what policies do, do they have policies? The principals have policies. Um, that, that prohibit the, the storage of those kinds of materials. And if they do have those policies, how are they enforced? So, so those are my two major concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Rotello. Um, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else in favor? Okay. Is there anyone, uh, wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anyone willing to speak in, uh, wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, um, maybe Ben, I don't know, there's a, there were just a, a couple, uh, if you could provide maybe some, some comments, um, it probably was like, uh, a, a double question there, the Mill Plain Road widening, curb cut and kind of the sightline at Anhack. Um, kind of snow removal. Uh, can you give a little back, uh, better explanation of what, uh, rock slope looks like, I guess? And, um, maybe, uh, the, uh, the applicant, if he can provide, uh, any of their, um, guidelines on contents of the facility.
Sure. I'll let, uh, Jason, I'll, I'll handle the comments, Jason, with respect to the road widening, the retaining wall and the, and the, uh, setbacks and and, uh, I'll let Jason talk about the contents.
Certainly. And then I can do the sightline too. I'll do the sightline.
No, I, actually I'm going to touch on that too, but Joe, yeah, jump in. Cause we, we did make some accommodations in the planting plan for the sightline as well.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilman. Um, your question about the contents, the materials i- is a good one. Um, this is why we hire professional management companies. Life Storage is out of Buffalo, New York. They're REIT. Um, have, they have thousands of life storage throughout the country. And their policies, uh, has absolutely nothing flammable. Um, eh, how is it policed? It's policed by, there's a questionnaire that you, uh, answer when you come in. It's part of your lease. Uh, things like a, um, say you were going to put your old lawnmower in there. They will make sure that the, uh, there is no gasoline remaining. You have to show them that the gasoline has been taken out of your lawnmower. So it's a very, very thorough questionnaire that's on the lease that you're signing for. Um, but it's the reason why we hire professional management company like Life Storage. You know, thi- this is not, uh, this is a company with very strict policies and a, you know, a, a very much of a legal lease that you're getting, that you're signing up for. So it's not a, um, it's not a handshake that you put your stuff in. It is a very, very strict process. And to sign up for a self-storage unit is usually a process. It usually takes about twenty-five minutes. It can be done online, but there's forms to fill out, there's questions. And it, even if the, even if the renter doesn't know they're, they're doing something wrong, this solicitation of what are you storing? How are you storing it? Um, is an important failsafe to make sure you're not storing the right things. In addition, things like food, uh, I, again, lesser of a concern, not flammable, obviously. But you're not allowed to concern, you're not allowed to have any food or any perishable products in there. Probably the rodents and, and some of the, some of the other things that could, could bring. So it is a thorough process, but what I would say is the key is to get the right management company in there and, and not to just have a, a mom and pop operation doing it. I'm, I hope that answered your question. I'd be happy to send forth a copy of the lease or to show you a copy of their Connecticut lease and this questionnaire is referring to, if that, if that helps, uh, more thoroughly answer your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to touch on some of the comments I'm with it, uh, Councilman Rotello and Chanesi had. First of all, to, to, to answer the question about the retaining wall. Um, this wall that I said is a maximum of ten foot high, it's right here. And the area that Ben had questioned, um, where the rock slope is behind there, it's hard to see because we're showing Abigail's new trees here is mature, but if you can imagine those trees aren't going to be there initially. You can see this dark shade here. That would be, uh, the ledge cut that you'll be able to see and you will be able to see some of that from the road. Um, again, it's going to be a natural ledge cut. It will be a, um,
Hey Ben, not, not to interrupt you, but, um, I'd like to show a picture of a project I worked on in Danbury.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, I don't, I'll, I'll do it after you.
Okay.
Share my screen. Yep.
Yes. And, and you know, the natural rock slope is, is, is definitely more attractive than hanging a, uh, wire mesh or chain link fence, uh, off, off of the, uh, off of a hillside. Uh, and you know, Ray went into details with, with respect to Jen's question on that. Um, I've seen a lot of times that the, the wire mesh gets hung. And I think in the case of Danbury Hospital, the slope is so high and they simply don't have the room for a catchment. And the rock slope is so close to the property line that they had to put that up almost as a, uh, last resort, uh, just because they didn't have the room that we do have on this site to put the catchment as well. But then to, uh, to, to answer, uh, Ben's questions, a lot of the ledge cut you're not going to see because it's behind the building as you can see here. But you will see some of it. You'll see a little bit right here. And again, this, this ledge cut here isn't severe and it's setback from the road. And you might see a little bit of it here, but it's, it's nothing like, you know, anything different than, uh, you see in other places along, um, Anhack Road. And then I'll let Joe talk about the future widening plans, but the, the, the setback in this zone is twenty-five feet. Our front property line currently is right here. On Mill Plain. Our building is fifty-four feet back. So we left, um, more than enough room, partially because we have a driveway here, but the building itself is fifty-four feet. And there's probably about twenty or thirty feet of, um, space between the curb line and the property line there. If, if anything was ever to get uh, widened after that, uh, our building would be the least of the problems, uh, on Anhack. And then just to go to Abigail's plan, and this was a comment, uh, from, I think it was from Jennifer back in the winter. She asked the same question that Paul asked as far as trying not to obstruct sightlines on Anhack and Mill Plain. And as you can see, this whole triangle here is left without plantings and we didn't plant anything in the right of way itself. So this whole area here was purposely just left alone. So we're going to maintain the existing sightlines. Joe, I'll let you talk about site distances and future widening.
Yeah. So Joe, Joe Boss is a record, um, trap engineer for the project. So in terms of the DOT widening, you'll paint a four lane, I, I thought that died a while ago, uh, but maybe it's coming back. Maybe it's something new. Um, but when they do widen, when they do widen the project, you know, it's not coming upon a, a project to accommodate them. Uh, that's something that's happened years in the future. So they, they would be, they would have to accommodate this site drive. They have to make sure the site drive access is maintained. They have to make sure they're not, they're not making non-conforming uses, not impacting sightlines. That'd be all part of the DOT widening project itself. So, but the big, the biggest thing here in terms of sightlines that Anhack Road, and I know I'm saying Anhack, I wasn't saying Ant Ha, Anhack, but you know, that, that, that approach is on the apex. It's on the outside of the curve. That's, that's where you want to have your sightline, you know? So the site drive itself, Anhack Road itself, those are on the, you know, the top of the curve. So when you look left and look right, you have the maximum sight distance as opposed to being the inside of the curve across the street. So the sightlines here are terrific. You know, the signal, if, if power goes out, you're right. It, it, it can't go to flash. You put stop signs, you have ample sight distance in either direction at this intersection because of the fact that this Anhack Road and the site drive are on the apex, on the outside of the curve. And that's where you want to be from a design standpoint to maximize your, your intersection sight distance.
Great. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. All right. I think, uh, should be.
And then, um,
Oh, Ray.
Yeah, I would just, when, when, when the, the councilman had a question regarding the rock slope, so let me.
Yep.
Again, for the record, this is Ray, oh no, uh, this is, uh, Ray Gennaro with, uh, Down to Earth Consulting. And this is a project we worked on a few years ago now. This is the Holiday Inn on Newtown Road. Um, and, and for the record, I am biased. I'm a rock guy. Um, to me, this is in terms of, of a vertical feature retaining wall, concrete modular block. Uh, and hopefully everyone could see this. Um, thi- this is the, the most aesthetically pleasing option in my opinion. This is a different rock formation on Newtown Road, but you could see the banding there, the quartzite. Uh, we will have, uh, similar, uh, features uh, on our rock slope. We also have some pegmatite in there as well. So we'll, uh, pink, uh, but you will see this, again, this beautiful banding. Um, this, the rock slope here is very similar in height to what we have. Again, the max cut that we will have on our project is thirty-five feet, uh, plus or minus. Um, and, and again, I mean, aesthetically, very pleasing. I could tell you that upstate New York, for example, there are zoning regulations in place to protect uh, the aesthetics, the beauties of, of natural rock formations. Uh, we just so, we, we will be creating one on, on this project here. Um, so, so again, uh, good example, uh, nearby project, Danbury, similar rock formation. Um, and, and you could see the outcome on, uh, on this project here.
Great. Thank you, Ray. Okay, um, Jen, I think, uh, you know, it doesn't make sense to close this. I know we're waiting for, uh, revisions and uh, some, uh, additional responses there. So, uh, is that correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Vice Chairman. At this point, all staff comments have been reviewed, uh, have been received. And we're just waiting for the project team to submit revisions. So it would be my suggestion to keep the hearing open to the June fifteenth meeting.
Great. Okay. Sounds good, Ben. Uh, so in that case, council members, uh, sorry, commission members, uh, Ellen obtained a motion to continue this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second.
Muted, Helen.
Helen, you were unmuted. Okay. So, uh, motion has been made by Perry, seconded by, uh, Helen. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, this public hearing will be continued to our next meeting on, uh, June fifteenth. Thank you, everybody, for.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, uh, moving along to, uh, item number two under the public hearings, uh, BRT, Brookview Commons LLC, application for revised site plan approval in accordance with sections ten D seven C of the zoning regulations for Brookview Commons Phase Two in the C CBD Zone, thirty-three Main Street, uh, I one three zero three four, special exception seven sixty-seven. Uh, I'll read the, uh, the, uh, legal public notice. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission of the city of Danbury will hold public hearings commencing at seven thirty PM on Wednesday, June first, two thousand twenty-two in a web-based meeting hosted on Zoom to consider the following matter. BRT Brookview Commons LLC, application for revised site plan, plan approval in accordance with section ten D seven C of the zoning regulations for Brookview Commons Phase Two in the C CBD Zone thirty, uh, three thirty-three Main Street, I one three zero three four, special exception seven six seven. Uh, copies of the, the, uh, the application are on file in the planning and zoning office for public inspection, parties and interested and citizens having an opportunity to be heard at this time. Arnold E. Finaldi, Junior Chairman, posted on the city website and Tom Clerk's office on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two and published in the News Times on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-two and May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. Purchase order number two zero two two dash one seven four. Okay, uh, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening. Dan Burtram, I want to do.
Yes, they made an affiliation for the, uh, for the record. Thank you.
Absolutely. Dan Burtram, BRT. I was, um, just looking to make a quick introductory comment and turn it over to, um, Steve Sullivan and walk through the planning. The biggest thing I think we're trying to do is we pull Brookview Commons together is to kind of create this indoor/outdoor experience that, um, much of today's, uh, submission revolves around. And so a lot of it has to do with what's going on on the ground level between the two buildings that really highlights a Brook experience in, in, in the middle of the city. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Steve.
Good evening. Uh, Steve Sullivan from CCA Engineers. I'm a licensed professional engineer, registered in CCA, Connecticut. Um, can I share my screen?
Should be able to.
Okay. Hopefully that's popping up on your screens. Everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay. So we're here for a site plan modification to the, uh, vehicular bridge that's, uh, located in the center of the site. It's, uh, providing access between Brookview, what we're calling Brookview One, which is the existing building on the east side of Payne and Brooke. Payne and Brooke is through, uh, the center here. And then Brookview Two, which is the current building under construction. Uh, during our previous, uh, application, we, we had a two-way traffic, uh, bridge here, um, with a three-foot crosshatch, which was part of the travel lane uh, in the previously approved application. Uh, we're looking to modify that plan and have just a one-way bridge from west to east, from Brookview Two to Brookview One. And also have a wider pedestrian access with that crosshatched area. The reasons for this was provides an improved and roomier experience for, uh, people walking across the bridge to go between the two sites. Um, also allows a, a better approach into Brookview Two's parking garage, which is located right here. Uh, there's a keypad, uh, that vehicles, uh, would, would utilize to open up the gate into that, uh, existing parking garage. So coming across the north side of the bridge, uh, there's a better angle turning into that existing parking garage. Uh, in addition, as, as Dana mentioned, we're looking to enhance the ground level experience between both sites. Um, I'm pulling up, um, our, our landscape plan. Um, so with, with this landscape plan, we have, um, sidewalks on both sides of the, of Payne and Brooke. Uh, there'll be lighting, uh, there'll be benches. Uh, we have some picnic area, uh, over here on the, uh, north of the bridge on the, on the, on the west side. And we also have a dog park area proposed on the existing site, uh, on the north side, uh, of that parking area. Um, so we feel access across that bridge, uh, with, with more room for, for pedestrians is safer and, and it's, uh, allows the projects to be more viable, um, with, with that access. And, uh, we want, we want the residents to be able to feel comfortable walking outside and experiencing the Brook, Brook, uh, uh, that runs through the center of the site. Um, also we have a robust planting plan, uh, with, uh, variety of different trees and shrubs. The existing vegetation was undesirable. There was a lot of uh, invasives and, um, vines, um, that we, we were removing and, uh, we're providing a much nicer experience, uh, around the Brook and, and, and to and from both sides of this, of the site. So with that, um, I could, uh, have Joe Boskus talk about uh, the traffic and, uh, he, he did submit, uh, a memorandum, uh, of, uh, what, what would occur with the one-way flow from, uh, Brookview Two, the west side to Brookview One. what what would occur with the one way flow from Brookview Two, the west side to Brookview One, the east side.
Thanks, Steve. And and the memo is dated twenty twenty two, just for the record.
Great, thanks.
So so Steve, can you zoom? Can you get a site plan and zoom out a little bit? And so what what's happening here is we had.
Joe, excuse me, can you just your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Joe Boskus, traffic engineer for VHB, but licensed professional engineer, state of Connecticut. Professionally, professional traffic operation engineer. So yeah, so so basically with Brookview One, there was no bridge, Brookview Two out of the bridge. And in our traffic studies, we had, as Steve said, we we were having two way flow. So some of some of Brookview traffic, Brookview One traffic can go across a bridge, access Main Street, and vice versa. Brookview Two can access a bridge and go to Brookview One and go to Crosby and so on. So so it now now we were changed to make it one way from Brookview Two into Brookview One. So basically, we're back to where we were, where Brookview One was is today, basically, no bridge. So in terms of our traffic study, very minor change in our traffic volumes, like twenty vehicles in a peak hour is changing. So we're basically putting Brookview back to where it was, what it's today. No access to Main Street from this bridge, access to Crosby, but and just change our traffic study numbers of very slightly by twenty vehicles. Less less twenty less vehicles accessing Main Street from Brookview One with this layout. So so the, as I said before, in terms of the other application and this application, there's really no traffic impact from this change. It it changes the numbers, yes. But reality is that it really doesn't change anything in terms of the impacts, potential impacts to Main Street or Crosby Street, is what's there today. So that's what the letter says. I'll leave it there and be already open to answer any questions.
Okay, commission members, any any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, go ahead, Jen.
If I may, we received a letter yesterday from from Vera, our traffic engineer. And it was too late to include it with the agenda, so I just like to read it into the record. And this has been forwarded to the project team as well. This is dated yesterday. Hi, Jen attaches a copy of the letter dated two twenty five, twenty twenty from OSTA indicating the generated traffic would not substantially affect the state highway traffic operations in the area. The proposed eastbound one way operation of the bridge onsite would actually reduce the traffic, the traffic exiting the main site driveway on Main Street, and will minimally increase the traffic volumes on Crosby Street. Therefore, the net impact of this directional travel change of the proposed bridge will have minimal impact on our street network. Thanks, Vera. And he also clarified, because in my staff report, I had inquired if the change to the direction of the bridge required the applicant to go back to OSTA, the Office of State Traffic Administration, and Vera confirmed that it did not.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Jen. Commission members, any other questions? Thought I saw a hand there. Helen, did you have a question?
No, I I thought I did, but I don't. Thank you, though.
Okay, yep. Any other questions from commission members?
All set here.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, I don't think I don't. I don't see any hands. Okay. Jen, it seems as though we have everything we need on this application. Is there anything else we're waiting for?
Mr. Vice Chairman, no, there's not. We'd only, we did an in house review through the planning department. And we'd asked the traffic engineer to take a look at it. So based on that, you know, all our comments have been resolved and there's no outstanding issues. If the commission is satisfied with the change in the direction, you know, the commission can certainly close close the hearing and move it for possible discussion to provide guidance.
Okay, great. So commission members, if you're so inclined, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Start again.
Okay, a motion has been made by Helen, seconded by Perry. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, this public hearing is closed. Commission members, I'll entertain a motion to move this matter to item two hundred old business for discussion and possible action.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Perry, seconded by Helen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, this matter now is moved to item two under old business for and for discussion and possible action. Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to continuation of public hearings and under that item number one. Pioneer Realty LLC. Application for special exception site plan approval for one, use generating over five hundred vehicle trips per day, and two, sale or rental of automobiles and trucks in accordance with section six A five G of the zoning regulations. Curry Automotive in the IL forty zone, one and five fifteen Myri Brook Road, G one eight zero zero seven and G one eight zero one six, special exception number seven eighty five. Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Yes, go ahead.
Good evening.
Name and association for the record, please.
So for the record, my, excuse me, my name is Megan Miles. I am the attorney for the applicant, and I have lost my voice as a result of the cold that I have had in my, I've lost my voice throughout the day. So I am going to not really speak tonight and hand it off to my team, but I'm going to briefly introduce everyone here tonight. Again, it's nice to see everyone is Bob Currency, the C O O of Curry Automotive. He's here on behalf of the applicant Pioneer Realty. We have our site engineer Emily Jones of Civil One. I'm Mike Kozlowski of Claris Design Build. And we also have our full traffic engineer team here tonight. We have Mike Galante and Greg Del Rio of Hardeston, Hanover. We we continue this hearing for really two limited reasons, to address civil matters and traffic matters. We are still, we submitted responses to staff comments last week. We're still awaiting, we received some further comments from the construction department this morning. And we're still awaiting formal engineering comments. So we will have to continue this hearing again to keep it open. But tonight, I would like Emily, our engineer, to just describe for the commission the changes that have been made to the site plan in response to comments, city comments, and also for Mike Galante to make her traffic presentation. And with that, I will stop talking and spare everyone for my point.
Okay, I'll take over. Don't worry. For the record, Emily Jones, professional engineer with Civil One Engineering in Woodbury, Connecticut. We're the site civil engineer for Curry Automotive. And we were here last month going over the site plan in general, but we didn't really touch on a lot of the site civil aspects. So I want to just go over briefly for the commission, some of the aspects of the site, and then some of the revisions that we've done since the last time we met. As you know, we are talking about a property that's located, actually, I'm going to share my screen. That's okay. Permission, does can anybody see it? Everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, as you know, we're talking about a site that's located, if I zoom in, you could see it's located on Myri Brook Road, Wallingford Road, and Sugar Hollow Road. So it's surrounded on three sides by road frontage, and then on the rear side, it's actually airport property, Danbury Airport property. The proposed project in front of you is for a postcard dealership. The permitted use that we're going for is a repair of automobiles. And then two special exception uses. One is for a high traffic generator, because we've determined that the total vehicle trip is over five hundred, coming in at five twenty three, and the other is for the sale and rental of automobiles and trucks. So the main access to the site is from Myri Brook Road with a secondary access coming off of Wallingford Road mainly for employees. And the way that the traffic comes in from Myri Brook Road is it will enter the site. I wonder, I think I can do, no, I can't. Do you see a little laser pointer in in PowerPoint? But the the cars will enter the site, the entry is two way, and if they go to the right, that's the main entrance to the building. That's also two way traffic. So you get all the way to the right along the frontage of Sugar Hollow. At that point, the rear of the property is for employees only. And they customers would need to turn around. That's the only two way area of the parking lot. Additionally, for service, the cars could come in off of Myri Brook, go straight into the service area drop off, which you can see on the left hand side of the building. It's an interior parking area. From that point, employees of the property will take over driving of the car and can drive it into the rear of the building or park it in some of the parking spaces along the rear frontage of the site. So there's also signage in the site that no customer should be going around the rear of the property. We have ninety seven parking spaces are required and two hundred fifty three parking spaces are provided on the site. There's a hundred and forty five engraft spaces, an additional eighty five rooftop spaces, and twenty interior spaces for the service department. A hundred and forty nine of those spaces are designated for inventory parking, including the stacked parking along Wallingford Road. And we do have public utilities in this area, although it requires a sewer main extension from Wallingford Road. If I go to the utility plan, Wallingford Road has sewer, but it needs to be extended, so that will have to be approved by city council. The site is in conformance with regard to loading spaces, dumpster location. And we also did perform a vehicle turning analysis using a car carrier vehicle, which will be the largest vehicle entering and exiting the site, and provided that in the set of plans showing that the car carrier can enter the site, park in the loading space, and then back up and go all the way around the building or perform a K turn and exit on Myri Brook Road. We do have a storm drainage plan, which was designed in accordance with the E P recommendations and the city of Danbury engineering recommendations. Again, I've gotten a few preliminary comments, some preliminary comments from engineering, but we're still awaiting our formal review from them. So we may have additional discussion on the stormwater management, but it's basically an underground concrete system that's designed to detain flows before exiting clean water to the Myri Brook Drainage System. Some updates from our last meeting. We received review letters from construction services, traffic, city planning, again, add in if you need to, building department, and the airport administrator. We've also received determination from the FAA, which we needed to do because of the proximity to the airport. And we have preliminary comments for engineering, which did result in some changes to the plans, but there may be more when I get her final review. So some updates is that our main entrance on Myri Brook Road was increased in width from thirty five feet to forty five feet, so that we could safely accommodate the car carrier vehicle coming in or exiting the site without impeding on traffic in the opposite direction from a passenger vehicle. We've also used flush mounted curb in that area and will have a radius of sort of stamped concrete or cobblestone widening that flare even further if that's needed for those cars to get out without going across the central line of Myri Brook or across the central line impeding traffic for the entry. So that was requested by traffic engineering. A big undertaking is the widening of Wallingford Road that was requested by traffic engineering. Currently, Wallingford Road is really a road that's not used as a through road. It's a dead end road. It's about eighteen feet wide. So along the entire frontage of the property, we are proposing to widen that road to twenty four feet. We had proposed twenty two feet, and it was requested by traffic that we increased that to twenty four feet. In addition, we're providing a three foot snow shelf and a five foot sidewalk in that area. So it may be a little hard to see on the screen, but there's actually about sixteen hundred square feet surrounded here in green that will be property to be beaded to the city of Danbury upon completion of that sidewalk, so that they own that Wallingford Road and and the sidewalk, all to be built to city standards. So that caused a little bit of a shift in the parking setback. We actually lost five parking spaces. Because of that, we are still, you know, well over the required amount, but it was a little bit of a bummer because that's inventory parking, but safety first, and that was requested by traffic. So we did accommodate that. We've also added a concrete sidewalk all along Myri Brook Road. Currently, there's no sidewalk on any frontage. And through additional discussion with staff, something that hasn't been incorporated into the plan set yet, but maybe soon, is a sidewalk along Sugar Hollow Road. So we will get that resolved one way or another prior to the next meeting. In total, if that sidewalk is built along Sugar Hollow Road, that's about nine hundred and fifty linear feet of sidewalk in the city right away that the applicant is going to put in. We've also added, they're going to add curbing along Wallingford Road and replace the broken curbing along Myri Brook Road. That's about six hundred linear feet. So there were a lot of recommendations. I think this applicant and this property has been put in a bit of a tough position just because of the location of the property. It's got frontage on three roads. So a lot has been asked of them that sometimes, you know, you may have a third or half of this sort of work that you have to do in the city right away. So the applicant is willing to do these things. We do have them on the plan. I think it will help public safety and and make the city happy. Do you think it's important to note that when I did a cost estimate for it, it was really in excess of about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars of extra of extra improvements in the right way? So it's a significant undertaking for Curry Auto to do, but it is an improvement to the site plan. We also updated the landscaping plan per memo from city planning. It is part of the Z B A process that has already taken place. And because of the proximity of the property to the airport, the property was granted a variance so that they don't have to plant trees within the buffer area or within the landscape island, but we still need to plant shrubs. And it was a little lacking in shrubs within the parking island. So that updated plan set with additional planting is incorporated into this set as well. And then we also submitted an additional, a revised lighting plan, which has lower light poles, so that there's no light trespass over the property line at all. I think those are the major changes from last meeting. We did receive a determination, I'm not sure if we discussed it the last meeting, from FAA that because of the building's location, they'll be required to put flashing lights on the rooftop corners of the building. And then there were no additional comments beyond that from from the airport administration. So that was all fine. And overall, I think we're in pretty good shape. Just waiting on some more comments from engineering and then to resolve the the sidewalk issue along Sugar Hollow Road. So that's it from the site plan aspect of the project. I think at this point, Megan, if do we want to turn it over to traffic, you can just nod. You can just nod if you don't want to say anything. So we have, who's on from Mike's office?
Mike Glonti.
Mike is here. So Mike, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen unless you think you need it.
No, I'm gonna actually ask Joan or Jennifer to let Greg from my office share the screen and he's gonna show the slides while I talk. If that works out. Great, thank you. Giddy, Mike Glonti from Potash and Hanover. We are the traffic consultants for this development. Greg Del Rio from my office is on. He's the project manager, was involved with this on a daily basis as far as preparing the traffic report. Part of discussions with the city staff and the, really the author of both the original traffic report and the updated traffic report. The reason for the updated traffic report, which is dated May of this year, just last two weeks ago, was to respond to comments from the city traffic engineering department. I, I must say that the comments were all incorporated. The changes to site generation and modeling of the intersections and so on didn't really change the results of the analyses. The analyses still show that area roads, which are, have quite a bit of capacity or reserve capacity in them, can accommodate this dealership. And the results of the analysis, which I'll summarize, I know it's getting a little late, so I'll try to be fairly quick, shows that we can, the roads can accommodate this develop, development and the traffic related to it. To study, not just briefly summarize it, but this, this sheet here is simply, obviously, the study area. We'll, we'll talk about the area as far as intersections, the traffic lines that were collected specifically for this development back in February, site traffic generation on an hourly or peak hour basis, AM, PM and the weekdays. Then a Saturday midday, because this is a commercial development. Those are the time periods that are appropriate for inclusion in, in this type of development. Trip distribution figure, which is where the traffic is coming from and going to, to this development, is based on the patterns of traffic, our understanding of approach to the site itself. The ramps is right next to US Route Seven. It's a great location. And we find that a majority of the site traffic will come and go from US Route Seven and a small percentage is actually coming, let's call it the local roads in the area itself. The final step is level service results, the analyses. And not listed here, of course, we included accident analyses and summaries of that. This slide here simply shows the, the black circles are the intersections included. You'll see the site location highlighted in yellow letters. I'm sure everyone knows the site. You can see it from US Route Seven. I wouldn't say it's attractive site, but the new building will be attractive and I think it'll be an asset to the city and this area. This is a figure from the traffic report. We looked at the, as I said, the weekday morning, weekday afternoon and Saturday peak hours. Counts were conducted in February of this year. Based on discussions with conduct, we no longer are applying any COVID adjustments, if you will. The opinion of pretty much every traffic engineer and certainly Connecticut DOT is that we're now experiencing a new norm as far as traffic volumes. And I would say traffic volumes have certainly increased. Patterns are maybe slightly different. We acknowledge that not everyone's getting on a train, but they're getting at a car. And that's reflected in the volumes, depending on what, where you are as far as the study area. The volumes are highlighted in this table, which is in the report. Volumes range from mostly several hundred vehicles during each of the peak hours. The weekday afternoon tends to be the highest. The weekday afternoon time period is four forty-five to five forty-five. The morning is seven to eight. And by the way, the Saturday is noon to one PM. But the volumes along the site frontage are generally in the several hundred vehicle volume. These are two-way volumes. And just for reference purposes, Wallingford Road, which is at the very bottom of this table, has about ten vehicles during each of the peak hours. Greg, you can go to the next slide. The next step is really the estimate of site traffic generation. In the traffic study, a traffic engineer focuses on the peak hours and I'll touch on that in a second. But I certainly want to touch on the site, the daily or average traffic volume. You know, in the city of Danbury, they have a criteria that says if you over five-hundred trips on a daily basis, you're considered a major generator and therefore a traffic study is necessary. I, I think regardless of the numbers, we would be doing a traffic study anyhow. But I think it's important, you know, this table shows, and this is based on IT rates, which is based on studies conducted all over the country and I think even in Canada, but it gives you a range of daily volumes that are significantly lower than the eight-sixty you see here and higher. But we actually have data from the, this dealership is actually in this, in the city already on Federal Road. And based on their information provided to us, it's estimated really to be about two-hundred-and-fifty trips in a day, a day, one-day condition. That's arriving and departing. So it's, you know, if you go to work, that's one trip in. At the end of the day, that's one trip out. So that's accounted for. So we, we just showed this number, just really for reference purposes, there was some discussion about it. And I know there was some concern about it, but the city's calculations, I believe, came up to five-hundred-and-twenty-three trips. So the focus of a traffic study is, as I mentioned, the peak hour condition. So please go, go back, Greg, thank you. I just want to show in this table, the weekday morning peak hour, and again, this is from IT, is sixty-six trips. Weekday afternoon is eighty-two trips. And Saturday, of course, being a busy day when you may have more customers, you could have a hundred-and-twenty-four trips. And that's the focus of the traffic study. Those are the lines we use. And we add this traffic to the weekday morning, weekday afternoon and Saturday midday peak hours. The average volumes is really there for reference purposes. There's no analysis of the roads based on that condition. It's the peak hours and that traffic generated and added to the roadway system. We, Greg, you can go to the next one. The 2022 traffic lines were expanded to reflect a 2025 traffic condition. We originally did 2024 and the city traffic engineer asked us to add one year. So we had a three-year out design year. So we added a growth rate of point-nine percent to account for that for each year, but we added another point-nine percent. But going back to the trip rates and the discussion on how these rates are, are rise for daily rates. You know, dealerships have changed. You know, years ago, we all went to a dealership, maybe drove to the next one down the road. We test drove a car. Today, it's, it's very different. You know, customers come and go, staff come and go, service test drives, off-site. Service centers, sometimes depending on dealership. New trends, people buy cars online, virtual visits. Cars are delivered to the home and may not even come from the dealership, but may, may come from remote parking lots or parking area somewhere else. This all affects the, the daily volumes and, and certainly could affect the peak hour volumes. But as I mentioned, the data volumes are only there for reference purposes. The study is truly based on the peak hour conditions and we use those straight from the book. And I'm sure that the city traffic engineer, based on his review of the second report, will agree with all the numbers. I just want to make the point because I know there was some concern on the daily volume in the volumes straight from the IT handbook, which shows a very large range of rates. Where you, we use the average rates and it's really there for reference purposes. Greg? Trip generation, distribution and so on, coming from the site itself. As I mentioned, the study shows that seventy percent of the site traffic is coming and going from US Routes Seven. Forty percent's coming from the north, from the direction of eighty-four. Thirty percent's coming from the south, from, let's call it from the Ridge, Ridgefield direction. And the remaining ten percent is coming on this, the local roads coming towards the site. And then another ten percent is coming down Sugar Hollow from the Danbury Mall area, just for reference purposes. And then the site traffic generation for the peak hours is applied to those distribution patterns, which are shown graphically in the sheet here, which is from the report itself. Greg? This table, and I really don't expect anyone to see it, but we, we've eliminated many of the columns. This is table five from the traffic report. It provides a lot of information on existing traffic conditions and the results of that analysis for each of the intersections. There are three single as intersections, plus we have the stop sign control, access drives and the stop sign control at the Wallingford Road intersection adjacent to the site itself. What this says in, in fewer words and not a lot of numbers is we maintain levels of service overall at each of the single as intersections. The stop sign controlled intersections, such as the driveways, operated acceptable levels of service, A Bs. And I believe there might, not just A's and Bs. But another important, important part of this is the projected delay in seconds, which is the increase in delay due to site traffic. As you can see from those couple of columns, towards the right side on the weekday, weekday morning, afternoon and Saturday. In every case, it's probably no more than one second of increase in delay. So based on this information, our analyses, and we've had some discussions with city staff and I'm sure we're not finished with those discussions. This shows, and I, I will never state there's no impact, but it shows minimal impact from the added traffic to the area roads from this dealership to be located on this, on this, at these intersections. And from this analysis, we show that we can accommodate the site traffic on area roads without any mitigation such as lanes or changing of traffic signals and so on. Knowing that this meeting will be continued to the fifteenth, I, I think I'll, I'll stop at that, at this point here. And we can always, always answer some questions and then follow up with some final discussion on the fifteenth itself. So just in the interest of time. And I can certainly answer questions or Greg can answer a question if he knows a little bit more about it than I might. Uh, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. Megan, is there anyone else that, on your project team that wants to present? And we'll, we'll hold questions till, till everybody's presented. No, all set. Okay, commission members, any, any questions for the, for the project team?
Not at this time. I think I can wait until our next public hearing if I have any.
Okay. All right. I guess we can move along then. Is there any, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Councilman Ben Chaney. I live at Five Riard Ridge Road. I'm also on the city council representing the sixth ward where this parcel is currently residing. I'm speaking sort of in favor of it, but I'm still on the fence on it. I do welcome Mercedes-Benz dealership on this parcel. It's much better than what we currently have and what we saw in the future. But as, as I think of here, the, the, the traffic suggestions here, I do have some concerns that I just want to put on the record to at least have addressed either tonight or, or at the next meeting. Before I talk about my traffic concern, I wasn't at the last public hearing regarding this project. And as my concern when it was one of the ZBA is still my concern here. And whether it was addressed at another previous meeting. But I do have an issue with vehicles parking on the front lawn, on grass. And when I saw some of your pictures, I did notice that there were cars parked on the front lawn. I just want to have it for the record. There's an ordinance at the City of Danbury that does prevent cars from parking on the front lawn. And as an author of that ordinance, I'm pretty much know everything about it. So I just want to put that on the record to see if that could be addressed either in a staff report recommendation or condition of approval that at least recognize that it is prohibited to do so. So the second concern I have, again, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that Mercedes-Benz is, is going there. But we do represent a lot of constituents that live in this area. I also live in this area. So I'm pretty much familiar with Myrie Brook Road. I kind of drive on it every day. So for those, just for the record, you know, Myrie Brook is a small and it is a windy road. It's a local road, but at least I always consider it a local road. While your presentation says thirty percent of the traffic is gonna come from the Ridgefield side, which is basically from Bacchus, where most of the school is, to Sugar Hollow. Well, thirty percent may seem to be a small figure. Thirty percent on Myrie Brook Road is a lot. It's curvy, so it really can handle much more volume. Over the years, we had several other auto repair shops that have come on that, use that road as well. So while you say thirty percent small, it's considered large for this area as well. And again, I would like to see as a condition of approval to try to minimize using Myrie Brook Road, to get that thirty percent down to twenty percent, fifteen percent will be voluminous to the people that live there. I know in other commissions that said it, and I'm gonna say it here as well, that to prevent test drives going into local neighborhoods, that's up in Spruce Mountain, up in that area to prohibit test drives on those roads. For those, again, mountainous and windy and small. So to limit vehicles up there would be greatly appreciated as well. Again, if you can limit access to Myrie Brook Road for test drives, it will also be greatly appreciated as well. So those are my brief comments this evening. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Chaney. Any other, anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Rotella.
All Road Tunnel thirteen Linden Place, Danbury. When I was a kid, I grew up next to a car dealership. It was a sleepy, sort of suburban, wealthy Oldsmobile Cadillac dealership. But when everything changed in the seventies, they started taking out other brands. The place expanded beyond zone capacity to handle the inventory and started parking cars on Myrie Brook. But it, it, it had a deleterious effect on the neighborhood. They would move cars out of the parking lot every day and park them on the public streets so that they could service cars. And then at the evening, they'd put them all back. There's a lot of back and forth with cars. We just want to echo Councilman Chaney's comments about test drives, about number one, keeping their inventory onsite and also a prohibition, at least some sort of an agreement about not testing cars in the residential neighborhoods above the airport, basically Spruce Mountain Cannonball, Old Musket, boats like that, which are great, by the way, to drive on. They're, they're lovely roads, they're lovely neighborhoods. And it would be wonderful to, to test a new car on some of those streets, but it would have a, a serious negative impact on those neighborhoods. So while the, the, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but the, the, the idea of, of taking a, a brand-new car into those streets to see what it can do may be irresistible. The same goes for one of the more fun roads to drive on, Worcester Heights. Also, very bad, a very bad idea. There are some streets, we call them the, the university streets, where it's hard enough for these people to take a left turn off of Terra Haunt or Harvard as it is, having cars being test-driven by exuberant Mercedes-Benz owners to be, would be as deleterious as it was in the, in the, in the car dealership that I grew up next to. That being so, I'm, I'm looking forward to the transformation of, of Myrie Brook in that particular corner and looking forward to welcoming this car dealership as long as they understand the sensitivity of the existing neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Rotella. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Okay, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, a couple of comments. There were a couple of items that maybe the applicant can either respond to now or we can wait till, till next meeting is, I think we'll continue this. It'll be up to you. And, and one clarification for Councilman Chaney. I think the thirty percent from Ridgefield is, is really coming from the Route Seven.
That's correct.
To there and, and the, the Myrie Brook Bacchus, I think, is, is just ten percent. But you, Mike, you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong there. So, and then, okay, thank you. And then the other comments, you know, parking on the front lawn or grass parking and kind of the test drives, I'll, I'll let you, whether you want to address that at, at, at this meeting or next meeting, I'll leave that up to you.
So for the record, Emily Jones, again, civil engineer. So the parking on the front lawn and grass areas was noted in Jennifer's staff memo. And there will be signage posted that parking on any grass areas, parking on public streets, loading on public streets is prohibited. It should be noted that that front grass area along Myrie Brook is five feet wide. That was a variance granted by ZBA. So along that frontage, the roads will, I mean, the cars will be parked closer to the street, but will not be parked street, but will not be parked illegally or in violation of any ordinance. They will be parked in designated parking spots only. Car carriers should be coming into the site. There are two loading spaces on the site that are large enough to handle a car carrier and plenty of space in the back of the site near the dumpster and the loading area for them to load and unload. There are six spaces inside the drop off for the service area. So really, I think we've accommodated a lot of that onsite to avoid those issues. And, and it is noted in, in staff report and our response that those cars will not be parked in violation of ordinance on any grass area. I don't know about the test driving, so I'm not going to comment on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I guess maybe we'll leave that till, till next, next meeting if, if that's okay. And I, I think we're waiting for, you know, additional information and a little bit of additional back and forth. So we'll, it looks like we'll, we'll need to continue this public hearing till, till the next, next meeting. Jen, is there anything else we, we need to say at, at this point?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, sorry. Yeah, I mean, at this point, we're waiting for the engineering department revisions came in last, wait, what's today, Wednesday? Revisions came in last Thursday, and they were distributed yesterday morning with the holiday to the engineering department. And she's working on, Kelly's working on her review right now. So my recommendation would be to continue it. I understand Megan will be granting us a fourteen day extension to get us to the June fifteenth meeting. The only other issue, and whether you guys want to, whether the commission wants to discuss it tonight or save it for the June fifteenth meeting because it is running a bit late. The only outstanding issue with respect to the traffic engineer has to do with the video detection cameras, and that was in the response letter. The applicant, you know, has not agreed to comply with that request from our city traffic engineer. So at this point, you know, staff supports the traffic engineer and that, and that request for the, the detection cameras. So with their objection to the requirement, it would then be pushed to the planning commission to make that decision. So you can either, you know, again, go through the traffic report, go through Vera's report as well as the applicant's response, and you can discuss it at the next meeting. But I just want to bring that to your attention. That's the only outstanding issue with respect to the traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Commission members, do you have any comments regarding that topic? Or do you want to, can push it to the next meeting? Perry, go ahead.
Very quickly, Jen, are discussions still ongoing on that topic? I know the applicant's response referenced potentially, you know, splitting the funding amongst other property owners, et cetera, something like that.
Um, a-again, I mean, I, I'm going, you know, off of information provided to me, and it, it looks like that hasn't been resolved unless they're, they're willing to speak on that subject, or, you know, again, it's one of those offline conversations we continue to have, which, you know, the, the, you know, the department and the traffic engineer and Department of Public Works is willing to continue those discussions.
Thank you. I can certainly wait to hear more on how those discussions go at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All right, then, so we will, given that, I guess we'll, Commissioner was out, entertain a motion to continue this public hearing. If you're so inclined.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Helen and seconded by Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing will be continued to our next meeting in June fifteenth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Moving on, we'll go to old business for discussion and possible action. Item number one, Laurel Draper, application for special exception, site plan approval for self-storage, modern self-storage in the IL forty zone, twelve Great Pasture Road, L one six zero one zero, special exception number seven eighty-two. Commission members, you see the draft resolution dated May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two previously, and I guess, Jen, if you can walk us through this, we can have some discussion on it.
Yep, absolutely. And forgive me, I left my file folder in my office, so I'm, I'm reading from, from the link from the agenda, which I was going to share, but at this point, I don't think I need to. So again, all the standard, whereas is that set up the application on page, I believe it's page four, you'll see the start of the conditions. The onsite storm drainage system will, shall remain private and regularly maintained. The dumping of snow in the detention basin is strictly prohibited. And moving on to, prior to the issuance of any permits, there's still some outstanding comments from the engineering department that need to be resolved. They also need a floodplain permit. And once they've satisfied those comments from the engineering department, we'll start working on that floodplain permit to get that to the planning commission. Number nine, all landscaping planted in accordance with Exhibit A. Ten, all work warranted on twelve and fourteen Great Pasture to provide a clear and usable access route that is wide enough and constructed of such material to safely accommodate maintenance equipment and vehicles to the detention basin shall be completed, including but not limited to the removal of the arborvitae shrubs, regrading as necessary, and the installation of an adequate compacted wearable surface. Again, this is that easement that the applicant offered to allow them access through fourteen Great Pasture to access that detention basin. I worked that language with our city engineering department with Kelly Green to make sure that that was to her satisfaction as well. Again, seeing to the importance of maintaining that basin. Number eleven, the applicant should provide evidence that any conditions outlined in the floodplain permit have been satisfied. Twelve has to do with the conveyance of property. There's approximately eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet of land they're conveying for future roadway improvements. Thirteen, this is the easement for portions of the sidewalk not located within the right of way. Again, this is all standard language. Fourteen, all work within the right of way completed, which includes the apron sidewalks and curbing. Number fifteen, this is the access easement agreement between twelve and fourteen Great Pasture, if you remember, for the purposes of snow removal and access, again, access to the back of that, that detention basin. So up above, we want the work, you know, all work shall be completed. This actually sets up, number fifteen, sets up the actual legal agreement between both properties. And again, that's going to be required to be provided, filed prior to zoning compliance. And then the remaining conditions are standard, you know, sixteen storm drainage, and the rest are just general comments. I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Jen. Pretty, pretty thorough resolution there. So, Commission members, any comments or thoughts there?
I just want to say, I think, you know, there were a number of conditions that got documented. As we went through the process, I believe that they all are satisfied with this, that they're within this, this draft resolution. So, you know, I, I just wanted to say, I think we've completed this, and thanks to Jennifer.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work that went into it. I think it's probably the lengthiest conditions list I've seen.
Yeah.
Very comprehensive, so I won't be reading them in my motion, but I appreciate the effort. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, and I think the, you know, the easement is pretty important there, so making sure that that gets documented properly, I think is pretty important. Okay, so, Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion for this, for this matter, for approval, I guess, if you're so inclined.
I don't, hey, it's Kevin. I don't know if I'm able to vote on this one.
No, actually, that's a good point, Kevin. Thank you. You are not eligible to vote. So at this point, we would have a three-person board, which is still a quorum, so it's still considered a legal vote.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks for putting that on the record, Kevin. Appreciate that. Okay.
All right, well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with the, all the documented conditions within the resolution.
Second.
Great, thank you. So motion has been made by Helen and seconded by Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this application is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number two, which we moved this today, BRT Brookview Commons LLC, application for revised site plan approval in accordance with section ten D seven C of the zoning regulations for Brookview Commons Phase Two in the C CBD Zone, three thirty-three Main Street, I one three zero three four, special exception number seven sixty-seven. Okay, so council members, I guess we can give our thoughts and provide Jen some guidance here. Anybody want to start out?
Seemed awfully straightforward to me, the changes that were being made, and I don't particularly see any issue with it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with that. Thank you, Perry.
Okay, yeah, I concur too, just a little bit of changing some direction in traffic and actually probably makes the pedestrian part of the bridge maybe a little bit safer, quite honestly. So, you know, I, I don't really have any issues with, with this as well. Fairly, fairly straightforward and simple, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. And just so the commission understands, you know, when they had come to us and requested the change in direction, you know, we weren't sure, when I say we, Sharon and I both, you know, debated this and whether it constituted, you know, going back to the planning commission. And we'd felt that it was a substantial change from what you originally had approved and the intent of what you improved. So, you know, in the end, it turned out, you know, Vera didn't have any issues with it and that the, you know, the update that Joe Balskas provided, there was really no impact. But again, we wouldn't have gotten there if we hadn't, you know, kind of pushed a little further. So that's the reason why it came back to you. We just weren't sure, and, you know, sometimes the judgment calls. And in this case, you know, it was a big change for the direction of that traffic, which is why we brought it back to you.
Jen, I just, I just remembered one thing, and hopefully it's not too late. I, I think this was, weren't we going to add the condition about the crosswalk or sidewalk on this?
Not on this one, not on this one. And we're still, yeah, we're still working through that. We, we ended up, yeah, that got very complicated very quickly. And we're still working with construction services and the applicant, as well as the city traffic engineer. I need to circle back with him to find another location for that crosswalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
We were going to push it to this.
Correct, but yeah. It, it's a little bit in limbo. The crosswalk where it was originally proposed resulted in a lot of work, more than just painting a crosswalk and putting in a curb. So we're, we're hoping to push it just to the other side of the intersection, and I need to circle back with Vera. We'll get it done. We're just kind of working out those details. The applicant's committed to it, and he said it on the record. So we're just kind of working out those details.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, let's move on. Arnie's going to owe me. Go to the referrals. Item one, it's an eight-two-four referral, May City Council Agenda number twelve, application for an extension of Water Main, twenty-two Michaud Road, J one zero one four five. It seems pretty simple, but Jen, can you walk through this for us?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you. This, again, this is very quick, and I will keep it very brief. This is a request for the water extension. It's just moving down the road slightly to the end of Michaud Road, because there's, they're constructing a new single-family house there, and they need the, the water. So it's within the sewer, the water service area. Staff has no objection, provided that it complies with, of course, complies with zoning and the standard requirements from Public Works.
Great, thank you. Seems pretty simple, you know. Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion for, I guess, a positive or negative referral, whatever you think.
I'll make a motion, okay. Go ahead, Perry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for a positive referral on this sewer extension referral.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made for a positive referral by Perry and seconded by Helen. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this matter gets a positive referral. Great, I think we're nearing, nearing completion here. You'll see under new business, a few new applications, looks like they're coming for next, next meeting and the meeting after that, July fifteenth and July twentieth. Another application looks under for reference only for next, next meeting. So the business isn't stopping, so. Think we got through everything, Jen. Is there anything else I missed or anything else for tonight?
No, that's it. You did a fantastic job, Bob.
Bob, you've been baptized, Bob. Like a big baptism.
And happy anniversary, Bob. Happy anniversary.
All right, well, one last time, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good work, everyone. Thank you. Hey, can everyone stand? Joe, can you turn this off?